All right.
Recording in progress.
It is June 17th, 2025, and we're here for the city council meeting of the Lewisville City Council. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Present.
Will you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. The next part of the meeting is public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. Excuse me, please, if you're interested in speaking in public comment, fill out a card at the door right outside of the chambers, bring it to the clerk at the end of the diets. She will call your name. When she does call your name, come up to the podium and make sure that you state your name and whether you're a Lewisville resident. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If there's somebody who wants to pool their time with you, you can speak up to three minutes or four, excuse me, six minutes. You don't have to speak for the entire time, but you're welcome to. Please be respectful of one another. It's difficult for some people to come up and speak in public, and if you can avoid the boos and hisses and the shouts of hooray and all that, that would be appreciated by all of us, I think. So, do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda or items on the consent agenda? None. Okay. Then we will move to the consent agenda, motion to approve the consent agenda tonight.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Council informational comments and committee reports. Would anybody like to give a committee report for a meeting that they might have attended recently on behalf of the council? Okay. I'll share one of them. I went to combating anti-Semitism summit last week. That was on Monday, and a group of folks from all over the country were there. It was originally designed as a mayor's summit, so there were probably 16 mayors from as far away as Golden and Brighton, and of course, all of them nearby. A lot of really good presentations on some of the latest sad trends in anti-Semitism in the area, and obviously, people were very concerned about what had happened a week now, almost a week and a half ago. But a really good dialogue amongst a whole bunch of people, some people from the faith communities, people who are mayors, people who are actually from other states, mostly legislators from other states who came in. But it was a really interesting and thought-provoking few hours. I wasn't able to stay for the whole day, but I stayed for the good chunk of it. If anybody would like a chance to look at the materials, I brought them back, and I'd be glad to share them with you. All right. City manager's report.
Thank you. One of the things I'd like to acknowledge is open space and Adams Team at the BioBlitz last week. Thank you to all of the volunteers, the scientists that came up, and then also staff for coordinating that event and then having the open house on Friday at the Recreation Center. And then, we've been getting a lot of positive feedback on the Lewisville Look Ahead, and so just to encourage people to sign up for that so that they receive it, and there's a lot of activities just this week alone. And so tomorrow, there's a sales tax workshop. We also have the summer concerts in the parks starting on Thursday, the street fair on Friday, continue with the farmer's market. So that Lewisville Look Ahead really highlights events coming up over the next week. So thank you.
And the Lewisville Look Ahead is just a summary of things that are coming up during the coming week. It is really wonderful. I've heard from residents to that effect. So, and signing up for it is as easy as what?
So right now, it's going out to everybody that receives basically the city's online newsletter, and so that you can go in there to click to update your subscriptions to add the Lewisville Look Ahead.
Good. Thank you. All right. First item of regular business is the Juneteenth National Independence Day proclamation. I'd like to have Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson read that proclamation and offer a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is an honor. My company has been recognizing and celebrating Juneteenth for several years, and I'm so happy that it became a national holiday in 2021, I believe, and happy to read the proclamation today. Whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest celebration of the emancipation of enslaved Black Americans and is so named after the events that took place on June 19th, 1865, in Galveston, Texas. And whereas, on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger informed enslaved people in Galveston, Texas of their freedom and that the Civil War had ended. And whereas, news of the end of slavery did not reach frontier areas of the United States for more than two years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation of January 1st, 1863, and months after the conclusion of the Civil War. And whereas, Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth Independence Day, Freedom Day, or Emancipation Day, is an example of America's commitment to liberty and is celebrated and remembered as the end of chattel slavery in the United States. And whereas, many Black Americans continue the tradition of celebrating Juneteenth as inspiration and for more than 159 years, Juneteenth Day offers pause for joy, happiness, and nourishment for the community. And whereas, Juneteenth reminds us of Black resiliency, struggle, and hope, and encourages future generations to continue the ongoing fight for freedom, equality, and dignity. And whereas, Colorado's Black community has a rich and diverse history, from the pioneers who settled in the state during the 19th century to the activists who fought for civil rights during the 20th century, to the artists, athletes, and entrepreneurs who continue to make their mark today. And whereas, we must continue to work towards creating a more equitable and just society for all Coloradans, and recognizing the contributions and struggles of the Black community is an essential step toward achieving that goal. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lewisville that we recognize the historical significance of Juneteenth this year and every year. Support the continued celebration of Juneteenth to provide an opportunity for the people of the city of Lewisville to engage more with the past, to better understand the lived experiences of all who have shaped the nation, and encourage the people of the city of Lewisville to observe Juneteenth Day with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. And the faith and strength of character of Black American, of Black America remains an example for all people of the United States, regardless of background, religion, or race. And be it for the result, the Juneteenth flag will fly June 17th through the 23rd, as the city of Lewisville recognizes, adopts, and proclaims this proclamation to underscore the freedom with dignity of every human being. As a governmental body, we oppose and reject any form of oppression and pledge to support our residents and local entities working to achieve equality and protect human rights. And with that, I move that we approve the proclamation.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Thank you. Next is the America 250 Colorado 150 proclamation and presentation. And I don't know whether we have, do we have a presentation? Yes, we do, from Iris Polinski. Thank you, Iris.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Lay and members of council. My name is Iris, and I'm the Arts and Events Program Manager.
And good evening. My name is Gigi Yang, and I am the Museum Services Supervisor.
Our topic for the evening is the Sesquicentennial Proclamation, and you might be wondering what this insanely long word means, but it is a combo word of two different anniversaries that are going to be taking place in 2026. The semi-quincentennial, which is the 250th anniversary of the US's founding, and the sesquicentennial, which is the 150th anniversary of Colorado's founding. And as the centennial state, Colorado is the only state that gets to celebrate two anniversaries in one year. So as a result of that, the museum, arts and events, and cultural services in general has been brainstorming and taking input from the community about how to commemorate the anniversary. And we wanted to familiarize you a little bit with some of our plans with this opportunity to speak with you today. But the only thing that we are actually asking for at this meeting is that council accept the proclamation for the commemoration as a formal acknowledgement that will be participating in these events which will happen statewide. And then Gigi will tell you all about the background.
So just to set a little bit of context for what we are doing and where this is all coming from, I just wanted to give a little bit of background for a lot of this planning. So for a national, these are, what we are planning is part of the national and state initiatives that have been in the works for a long time. The US started looking at this 10 years ago in 2016, and so they created the US Semi-Quintennial Commission, and then later the America 250 Foundation. And both of those were looking at how the US can commemorate these events, especially areas of the West, of the West, where we did not have the American Revolution. We don't have a lot of these, like, early revolutionary sites in our areas. So they were trying to create a way that this can be commemorated across the country in a way that made sense. So they really wanted it to focus on decentralized and grassroots commemorations, so that we are all looking at what is happening here locally and what is relevant and important to us in our local communities. So then in 2022, AASLH, which is the American Association for State and Local History, came up with a field guide of different themes that people can focus on that can be applied to a number of different topics that can be locally addressed, including unfinished revolutions, power of place, we the people, American experiment, and doing history. So those are all really broad themes that we can customize to our areas. And then for Colorado, we have statewide initiatives as well, and those have been in the works since 2019. And those are relating to creating memorable experiences for people. So looking at statewide public festivals and events, things that we can do locally, but also celebrating our statewide anniversary, also commemorating our shared history. So looking at the diversity of the experiences that we have in the state, including shared heritage, but also cultural experiences that can be spread more widely, and also supporting our Colorado communities. So really looking at statewide, how can they support our local communities and celebrating what is happening in our own local towns as well. And then just a little bit about what we have done in the past. So in 1976, Lewisville also celebrated the bicentennial. And the way they did that was through the three themes, which are similar to the themes that we are talking about today. They looked at heritage, honoring the past, festivals, so celebrations and community-wide events, and then horizon. They were looking for things that they could use that would benefit the community in the future. So those three things are really similar to what we have today. And out of those came the miners' statue that is outside City Hall. There was a large Fourth of July celebrations and community picnics. And then also came out of that for the horizon was in Lewisville, but also nationally, a growing interest in local history. And so our Lewisville Historical Commission and the museum both came out of movements from the bicentennial, where people became more interested in their local histories, took more pride in what was happening. It didn't have to be a grand history, but it was our history. So that's where many, many local history museums came out of the bicentennial. Okay. So about the big picture. So as any anniversary will be a time that you can stop and reflect on what is happening. And so this is really an opportunity for us as a community to look at what is our role nationally and who we are. Like, what is the through line that made Lewisville, Lewisville from our very beginnings? And so it was a chance for us to reflect on who we were in the past, and then to examine who we are today in terms of who was, what is, who is making up our community today, and then also look at the vision for our future in terms of what we would like to see Lewisville to become. So looking at all of those things, those are part of the reasons why we would like to be part of the celebrations statewide as we fit into state and local history, and also who we are locally.
We wanted to recognize that we think that this commemoration also fits in within council's work plan. So recognizing the diversity of experiences in Lewisville's past and present has definitely been a guiding star in our planning for this commemoration. We definitely are focusing on singing some of the untold stories of unknown heroes of Lewisville through these programs. And we're also hoping that by having these programs, we're going to bring Lewisville's community together in an inclusive and representative way. And obviously, increased programming would hopefully bring more people to our community spaces and increase foot traffic to Lewisville's businesses, and in that way, support economic vitality. One of the projects that we have planned for the commemoration is a public art project, a sculpture that we hope to install in Memory Square Park in commemoration of Mary Treebing, and Gigi will tell you a little bit about her.
Okay. So Mary Treebing is a resident, was a resident in Lewisville, who was very typical in many ways of the Lewisville experience, but also very unique. So she was a woman who was born in 1920, and she grew up in Lewisville. She attended the Lewisville Elementary School in Memories, that was in Memory Square Park from 1929 to 1934. So during her, like, middle school years, early, late elementary, middle school years. And then her family moved to Oklahoma, where she finished her high school career. And then her parents did move back to Lewisville, and they lived here for the rest of their lives. So the reason we are interested in Mary Treebing is because she had a very typical sort of Lewisville life, childhood, but then she grew up to become a WASP, the Women's Air Force Service Pilots during World War II. And so she just had a joy of flying. She had an early interest in it. And in this regard, she is very unusual. She was one of only 15 WASPs who served in, from Colorado, and of one of only two from Boulder County. And so she decided she wanted to learn how to fly from an early age, told it, and did it without even telling her parents that she was doing this. And then her brother was also, this was all on the cusp of World War II, her brother also joined up. She enlisted the same day that her brother did. And she went through all of her training. She would, the stories are that she would fly over Lewisville and kind of buzz her parents' homes. I'm not sure if that's actually true, but she was a very spunky, very determined person, and she just had a joy of life. And unfortunately, she died on her mission, in one of her missions on, in 1943. So she had just started flying, and then she had to come in for a landing that required her to go over a barn and under some wires, electrical wires, and she just couldn't make that with her plane and was killed instantly when her plane crashed. So she had a short history with her, with her experience, but she is a really unique and significant person. And while we like her here in Lewisville, is wanting to claim her as one of our own, she is also widely recognized and honored elsewhere as well. So she was most recently during the Memorial Day this year, she was commemorated at the Freedom Memorial that's in Aurora, Colorado. They had a, they had a large ceremony where they commemorated three different people. So she is on their honor roll there. And then she is also honored at the Spirit of Flight Center, which used to be in Erie, but is now in Idaho as one of the, and she also received a Congressional Medal of Honor at that ceremony as well. And she's also honored on a bronze plaque at the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs as one of the 38 WASPs who were killed during World War II. So for that reason, we find Mary Treebeing a very interesting person, and also someone that kind of represents the spunk and the, and the energy of Lewisville, while also kind of coming from our hardworking coal mining background as well.
So, and of course, we would go through the public art process to install this piece, and it would end up being a lasting physical piece of the commemoration, similar to how the miner outside there is of the bicentennial. In addition to public art, we would like to enhance our event programming around this theme. So a bigger and more bombastic Fourth of July and Labor Day celebration, which we already have, but also specific programming around the themes of the commemoration. So we're still laying the groundwork for some of the programming that we want to do, but they all revolve around the three themes of power of place, bringing past into present, and who we are. So for instance, how that works is power of place is one of our themes, and one of our program ideas is doing a tour of Lewisville that focuses on locations of importance around the city, and then would include local actors who are dressed in historical garb and basically telling the story of that location or whatever important thing happened there. And then bringing past into present and who we are, we also have program ideas that would specifically evoke those themes. We didn't come up with all of these ideas by ourselves. We have already had two community meetings with representatives from local theaters, local art organizations, as well as our boards and foundations, and they were just overflowing with ideas for things that we can do and ways that we can commemorate the event. So we got a lot of that from them, and they're also planning on participating in the events as we make them happen next year. So I think we've already begun to accomplish this community project together. And that's basically that, but Gigi will have the final word.
So that was hopefully a good preview of what we have planned coming up. And then we just again want to ask you to accept the proclamation for America 250, Colorado 150, or the Sesquicentennial celebrations that would then include Lewisville in all of the statewide and national commemorations for this anniversary. And we are also happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions before I read the proclamation? Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
How many times did you have to practice that word to be able to say it so confidently up here today? In all honesty, great work. Very much appreciated. Looking forward to seeing the execution of these events and arts.
Okay. I get to read this proclamation. This is the America 250, Colorado 150 proclamation. Whereas the year 2026 marks the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And whereas the year 2026 marks Colorado's 150th anniversary of statehood. And whereas, the city of Lewisville, founded in 1878, has contributed proudly and significantly to the history of our nation and our state for more than 148 years. And whereas, in 2016, the United States Congress established by joint resolution the America 250th Commission to encourage observance of the 250 years of our nation's existence. And whereas, the Colorado Legislature established the America 250, Colorado 150 Commission with the passage of Senate Bill 2211, and the commission has determined its mission and purpose is to celebrate Colorado by acknowledging the completeness of our shared history, honor that which makes Colorado unique, and strive toward a more perfect union. And whereas it is appropriate, the city of Lewisville engages fully in our, with our past and looks toward a shared future. And whereas, the Lewisville City Council thus encourages its residents to create and participate in programs that will commemorate the history of our city, of our state, and of our nation. Now, therefore, we, the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim that the city of Lewisville will engage in commemorative activities leading up to and during the commission's stated length of observance, July 4th, 2025, through December 31st, 2026. We encourage all community members to take advantage of the resources available from the America 250 Commission, the America 250, Colorado 150 Commission, and the city of Lewisville to observe the Sesqui semi-quintennial anniversary by coordinating commemorative events. To observe the Sesqui semi-quintennial anniversary by coordinating commemorative events, planning historical activities, providing opportunities for public discourse, creating scholarship around Colorado's complete history, creating educational opportunities, and by seeking opportunities for historic preservation, the city of Lewisville pledges to uplift, support, and generate commemorative opportunities dated this day of June 2025. And I would move for the passage or the proclamation of America 250, Colorado 150.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much for the presentation, and we look forward to all the activities. All right. The next item on our agenda is the University of Colorado Boulder Information Update. And I understand there's a presentation. Take it away.
It's not showing.
Through the mayor, while we are setting up for this next item, I would just like to introduce Brandy Cummings, our new Cultural Services Director. Her second day on the job and attending a council meeting the second day on the job. So, welcome, Brandy.
Intrepid. Welcome.
It's got a fake desktop, sorry. Okay. Hello. I'm Lori Call, and I'm here with my colleague Derek Silva. We're associate vice chancellors at the University of Colorado. As many of you know, about 18 months ago, CU purchased the site 1164 West Dillon Road. Some of you are familiar with that site as the former Cinnabar. And so we just wanted to give you an update on the project. I know that many of you were with us about a year ago when we did the town hall. We had more than 150 people at the rec center. It was great. We heard lots of feedback. And so we really just wanted to come back, talk to you a little bit more about what the process looks like, where we are, and answer any questions that you have. So of course, the technology isn't working perfectly, so forgive me, but, but we'll kind of walk through it. I think most of you know where the site is. It's immediately adjacent to Highway 36 at McCaslin. So the reality is that Lewisville has been home to CU Boulder affiliates for generations. Today, we have about 800 faculty, staff, and students living in Lewisville, about 600 faculty and staff, and about 200 students, many of whom are graduate students, non-traditional students, but, but some who are, you know, younger undergraduates as well. And so as we were looking, one of the pressure points that CU is finding, and many communities are finding right now, is that housing is becoming a challenge. And that isn't a new phenomenon, but it's, it's increasing at CU. And so the universities started to look at where, where might housing be appropriate. And this site became available. One of the great assets of this site has to do with the RTD site. And so it's a 14-minute bus ride. You can get on immediately at the stop, you're dropped off. You can get on immediately at the stop, you're dropped off, um, on main campus in 14 minutes. I'm an avid bus rider. I, I think it's a wonderful way to get around and there are more than 70 trips per day from that site to main campus. So super easy for residents. Um, it's also about a 25-minute bike ride. Um, the, the path is right there, of course, and with the propensity of e-bikes, that's becoming easier and easier even on that uphill climb for a lot of folks. Um, so a, a, a number of different goals, obviously. We loved the, the transit orient, orientation of that. We also, um, you know, we're looking for housing and another piece of this is kind of the wraparound. So what does the experience look like living there? Um, and, you know, what might a mixed use development look like? We'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Just wanted to, of course, lift up the, the buses because that is, um, a central part of the site. And then for those of you who weren't there, it was standing room only, lots of excitement, um, about a year ago. So what did we hear from the residents of Louisville? Um, a number of things, and this is obviously high level, but, um, one of the keys was, how do we reinvigorate the McCaslin corridor? It's been quiet recently. There's been some transition. Um, this is, a, a number of folks really saw this as an opportunity to bring a little more energy into the area. Um, they also mentioned retail and restaurant vibrancy would be helpful for that area of town. Um, the, the continued transit and, and bike enhancements, um, that we see as a huge opportunity. Um, there was, you know, suggestions around outdoor living spaces and then certainly lifting up sustainable business practices. And, and Derek will talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Um, we did hear, you know, some concerns about, oh, what might the height look like? We don't want anything too big. And so we're certainly interested in being good neighbors and, and we'll have, you know, ongoing conversations about that as well.
Uh, thank you for making time today, council. My name is Derek Silva, as Lori mentioned, and I'm going to take this slide on sustainability, which I know is a core value in Louisville and certainly one of ours at CU Boulder. Sustainability is one of our marquee research programs. So we put a lot of investment, energy, have a lot of, uh, principal investigators, those are researchers, uh, in normal parlance, that are looking into this and trying to make headway into sustainable, uh, building, building materials, um, use of energy, that sort of thing. So, uh, this, uh, you know, it's a core focus of ours, right? And so whenever we go into, um, a, a new development, lead gold is our minimum standard, but we aim for lead platinum. And we also, uh, we have recently worked on a development of a hotel and conference center. Sorry, this bending over is a little out here. Can y'all hear me if I stand up like this? Okay, good. Um, so in the hotel and conference center, uh, our hotel is the first large hotel in the country that is all electric, right? It's 254 rooms. Before that, it was about the largest hotel, a bit about 80 rooms that was all electric. And it, that's a, a kind of a tipping point, right, for that industry? And you're going to see a lot more hotels follow the suit. We're really proud to have that on our campus. So these are the kind of things, even, and we worked with a private partner on that facility. So we really encourage that partner to pursue the highest sustainability standards and goals that we could possibly do. So our climate action plan on campus is 50% emissions reduction by 2030 and carbon neutrality no later than 2050. So those are ambitious goals. Um, we have a lot of headway to make before we get there, but we'd love to have this project be one of the pieces on the way to that path, right? We'd like to see it developed before 2050 for sure, um, but we do want this to be just another example of how we develop and build sustainable, cutting-edge facilities. Uh, let's see, all our buildings, as I mentioned, are leads gold standard and that includes credits for energy efficiency, water use, you know, all the concerns that we have here on the front range. And, do I control this? Okay. So additional elements, uh, that are around this develop, this potential development are, um, continue conversations with RTD. Obviously, that park and ride is a, is a very, very valuable facility to have here in Louisville, as well as the, the stops going either way. When I look at the access and the multimodal access into campus through bike, through bus, uh, we can really help to pull some cars off the road, which I know that you all have an interest in that. We do as well. Anything we can do to minimize carbon, uh, that's exactly what we're looking to do. And then continue conversations with the community. This is one of, this is really the second, uh, point of conversation and we look forward to more community engagement. Uh, certainly, we've been very eagerly watching the comp plan process and wanted to have that work out before we even started discussions on what we're going to do there because that obviously is a reflection of the current community values and that's what we'd like to, to, to certainly engage with, so. And then continue to leverage insights and understand from that process, right? So the more we can understand from that, the more we can think about what a good viable, sustainable development will be here. Then, next step. So our next step is to, once the comp plan process has, has completed, we look to start negotiating an, an entitlement agreement with the city of Louisville. So we'll start working with staff to build up, out that agreement and that agreement will reflect the values of Louisville and the values of what we can bring to the table. So we, and we do have experience in doing that. We've done that with City of Boulder and others. So it's something, it's a process that I really look forward to and I look forward to learning more about your values and figuring out how we can develop something that you will, will be proud of and that will serve our community and give a, I couldn't think of a better place for our community to live than Louisville. Um, I, I prefer Louisville over Boulder, just to say. So, um, you too. So the, another step is develop an RFP and select developers. So, once we have an entitlement agreement that goes to the public process and that's approved, then we'll have something that we can go out to an RFP, to a developer. And we'll, uh, engage developers, find ones that can, we think can deliver on the values of our agreement and make that selection and move forward. Uh, and then design and break ground, probably look at 2027 to 28 to break ground. So, I think that's it.
Questions?
Councilmembers, yes. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you. Yes, I want to first thank you for the presentation and for redoing this whole area. I'm particularly impressed with your sustainability efforts. That's one of my heart moments. I'm also wondering if you put any thought into the new film festival coming to town and having a space for that.
Yes, so I was actually with, um, Oedit and, um, members of Sundance today over lunch. I was sitting next to, um, Mayor Brockett in Boulder and when I said that I had to miss a dinner because I was going to be here, he said, um, he, he was, he felt like, um, we were cheating on the city of Boulder with, uh, the city of Louisville. So I thought that was really funny. Um, the, uh, the, there's a huge opportunity with the Sundance Film Festival and I actually sat on the bid committee, um, that brought the film festival to the area. Um, and they're absolutely looking at this as regional. So first of all, there, there are not the beds that the city, that the, the film festival needs in Boulder proper. And so, um, they're looking at, um, you know, this is going to be a Boulder County at minimum and really it's going to be a front range. You know, there will be folks staying in Denver and coming up. There will be folks staying in, in Westminster and Brumfield. Um, and so I, I think there will be huge opportunity, the restaurants, um, you know, my guess is, um, it'll be really difficult, apologies in advance, of getting, uh, reservations, um, for, for a couple of weeks, uh, in January 2027. But, um, I think the vibrancy that that'll bring is really, really exciting. And we're also looking at pulling in the school district and so we've talked with Rob Anderson and BVSD about how do we engage K-12 students as well? Um, and I would expect, um, you know, obviously, um, the, the kids and families of Louisville to be an important part of that.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yeah. One little question from your presentation. So, you know, I assume that this development would, would be part of the, your campus climate action plan. Um, and, but I'm just curious, like, generally speaking, sort of what, what facilities are covered by that, what are not covered by that?
Anything we develop as a campus needs to comply with the, our climate action plan. And so that's everything, including any facilities we partner with other partners to develop. So it's just, it is a priority, priority of our chancellor. And so he does not see a distinction of, like, these facilities should comply, these don't. Basically, if CU Boulder is touching it, it needs to comply with our climate action plan.
I'll just build on that. Um, so, um, our, our chancellor, Justin Schwartz, would also say, and the faster the better, right? And so, um, for those of us who have the opportunity to work with him, um, you know, I, I would say his foot is on the accelerator and all of our, uh, feet are on the accelerator as far as how we can, um, improve our carbon footprint and it improve all of our facilities. So, um, we, CU just hired a new, um, vice chancellor of sustainability. His name is Andrew Mayock. He, um, actually served as the chief sustainability officer for, um, Joe Biden with the Biden administration. And, um, he's in the midst of relocating right now, um, but I, I know that he's going to bring terrific leadership as well. And so this is a top priority and we really see this as kind of a pilot opportunity for what could be done, what should be done. Um, you know, I, I think Derek outlined kind of where we see the floor of these opportunities, which is, you know, quite frankly, best in class and on many levels, but, um, we see more opportunities as well.
Other comments, questions?
I'll ask one more. Um, I don't know, um, I'm not sure the best way to phrase it, but have you thought about or will you think about, um, you know, connections from the development into Louisville?
Yeah, we've been meeting with city council staff just to have touchpoints and have a, really a conduit into understanding how things are developing with the comp plan and where Louisville's headed. And among those conversations were connections that not only back over here to downtown, how we create clear connections there, but is that, can we partner in ways to create connections going north from the site, uh, up to where I think the New King Supers is going in that way and, and creating more pedestrian friendly. Obviously, that McCaslin corridor is not too pedestrian friendly today. It's very, reminds me of a very eighties-style retail development. And I, I look forward to figuring out how we can partner to help be a catalyst for redevelopment along there, including pedestrian friendly. I mean, it's certainly, our campus is very pedestrian friendly and we try, and we're even trying to make it more so. So we understand the value of that and having things scaled to a pedestrian level and not have the facilities overshadow the life and community that's around it. So, um, I would say that we're open to all those conversations and would love to be a partner to, any way we can make that better.
Great. Thanks.
Yep. Member Tim.
I realize we're still pretty far away from, um, the final product, but I'm really curious as you guys move along, just to keep getting information around, you know, who the housing's for, you know, whether it's faculty housing, graduate student housing, undergraduate housing, employee housing, like, uh, you know, other staff and maintenance and custodial that work there. Um, it sounds like you're eager to answer that and more, but you go ahead.
Yeah, um, I, I, I missed a step I should have led with. We are not going to have 18-year-olds living at this site, okay? And so, um, I hear concerns, of course, you know, there's this notion of, and that's not going to be the case. The, the reality is, the, um, the residents are going to look like us, right? We are staff members of the university and you're going to have faculty and staff who are, you know, professionals that, that can be described in lots of different ways, but this is not going to be a residence hall. It, it's possible that there would be some graduate student housing. Um, I will tell you, my friends in Boulder love graduate students. They're the quietest people on earth. Um, and so, um, we don't tend to hear complaints about that and, and, you know, suffice it to say, we don't see this as, um, you know, the appropriate space for 18 to 21-year-olds.
Okay. Um, I was just going to add to that, uh, if, if I may, uh, Councilmember Dickinson, is that also in early conversations, we've talked about how we might partner with the city to help you meet your inclusionary housing goals, right? So we'd love to see a piece of these be, be affordable. Um, some of the, some of the folks that, uh, that work at our community cannot afford to live here, right, or anywhere near here. And to create opportunities for them is important for us. It just lifts up the entire community. And so that's something we would love to explore. And I'm not sure how we as a university cannot do it ourselves. We'd have to partner with other partners to do that, but certainly that is something that we see as important and I understand that, that's also a value held by the city of Louisville as well.
Yeah, um, I appreciate that piece of it. I'll say that I like diversity of, of humans and we actually have a dearth of 18 to 22-year-olds in Louisville. Um, so it doesn't actually bother me. Now a dorm maybe is a bit much and that's how you'd get that age group. So I, I get what you're, I get that there are more fears around that than excitement. Um, but generally speaking, I think we're, you know, we're looking for the space to be activated and for people. So the other piece that I'll be excited to hear more about in the future is just, you know, how, um, insulated or isolated it is and how connected it is, right? And so, you know, to the, uh, question of like a dorm with a food hall, like, oh, we're just going to stay there and eat. And since that doesn't sound like the direction you're going, you know, how many, that goes both ways. How much will the population be, you know, coming into our community and, and, you know, uh, visiting our businesses? And then are there amenities and cool things there that are open to the public, not just open to the residents, right? And so I think it goes both ways. And I imagine there needs to be a little bit of each, but, but I'll just be curious to hear more about, you know, what possible additional amenities our community might get because of you guys coming in, like, oh, that's really cool, there's a swimming pool there, or there's a, whatever, that's actually open to the public. Like, nope, no, that's going to be private to the residents. And I think all those things are fair, but I'll just be curious to hear that more as, as you come along with general concepts and, and what you're trying to create.
Sure. And, uh, look forward to communicating with you on that and letting you know how things develop and also just having a dialogue because we want to look to you to, to help us define what those values are and what would be valuable on the site. I can tell you, all of our early visioning is, this is a very porous site, right? There shouldn't be, there's no, a block, there shouldn't be any sort of exclusionary activities or facilities here. We do look to, we want some mixed use because mixed use is really kind of the, the gold standard of current multifamily developments to have something on site, but that's all open to the public as well. So even that mixed use, so if it's a restaurant or coffee shop or whatever it is, need to look at the market, look to you all to say, what's, what are the needs here? And what would create a viable development that people will be proud to live in, that you'll be proud to be at the gateway to your city here off 36.
I'll, I'll just add, if you don't mind, um, you know, our hope, our vision, um, and expectation is that the folks who live here are part of the community. And, you know, it is, and I know it's kind of geographically separate, but, um, you know, certainly, you know, they'll be sending their children to, to your schools and, and they'll be shopping at the supermarkets and they'll be, you know, buying things on Main Street. Um, you know, we're, we're expecting, um, it to be very much so a part of the broader Louisville community. And, and just to lean into Derek's comment, the, the facilities and amenities, I mean, this isn't going to be a gated community. This is going to be a place where we want people to congregate, um, you know, lots of different people.
Others? Yes. Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Um, I actually have no questions. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing it, um, again to us this time, but continuing to engage our community. It's clear from the presentation that you are really listening and I know that's not an obligation of the university, so, um, representing a lot of the people who actually live along McCaslin and near on the west side of town, thank you for doing that. And in wanting to embrace a lot of our neighbors, our work for CU and it'll be lovely to see even more people be able to, you know, enjoy living in Louisville with the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Um, just a couple of quick, do we have? Oh, we did get.
Yeah, can you all hear me? I'm, I'm having some connectivity.
We can.
Can you see me?
Uh, no, you're a blur, but that's okay. You're usually a blur.
That, that may be how I look. Um, I, I just wanted to add my thanks for coming and the, the detailed presentation. And then just echo the Mayor Pro Tem's comment that, um, you know, I think many of us were 18-year-olds, 18-year-olds once and, um, certainly those are, those are folks we would welcome into our community, um, whether they're undergraduates or graduate students, um, or, or what have you. Um, you know, I, I think we value the young here, just as we value the old and the in-between and, and people of all ages and, and characteristics. So certainly wouldn't want to send the message that we're trying to exclude anyone.
I appreciate that. And, um, you know, the reality is, um, kind of the nature of what the, the site will be, it probably will be younger professionals. It'll probably be, be people, you know, I'm imagining, for instance, we recruit an English professor from Chicago and, um, they're looking to, you know, relocate, they don't know where they want to live, they may live here for a number of years. And so, um, you know, who knows what exactly the profile will look like, but we are excited to, to lean in to. to, to lean into a community that we know has been home to CU affiliates for, for generations.
Thanks so much. We appreciate it.
Just want to amplify a couple of points. One is that we're absolutely delighted about this. I think we have, I hope that you've felt that, felt the love, because we have so many people here in Louisville that are connected in some way with the university, that they work there, or they teach, or they have gone to, to school there. Or like many of us, go to programs and have season football tickets and all kinds of connections to the university. I, you know, I'm really looking forward to the activation that you're going to provide in that site in all the ways, social, environmental, economic. I think it's just going to be an absolutely terrific addition that way and kind of give us, I think of the transportation oriented development that we've been kind of hoping for, for a long time, and it's gonna, gonna flower, I think, under you all. And I just hope we can continue to work together as partners. I have absolutely no doubt that that's going to be the case and make kind of a better, a better relationship and to provide more to the community together. So I, and I appreciate you coming tonight and speaking to us. And this was, this was a fair amount of detail about the kinds of things that you're thinking about, and it's, it's useful to have. So we hope you come back and kind of keep us in the loop. I know you're meeting with our staff and that's great.
We absolutely will. And as a follow up, I'm happy to give our contact information and, and most importantly, please reach out if you have questions. We know that you hear from residents from time to time who will ask certain questions. We don't have answers like it's going to be brown or gray yet. We're still pretty far off, but we want you to know how to triage questions and, and we'd love to come back again as, as we're further down the line.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you.
And Mayor Lay, I just want to say that I hope that, and council members, I hope you've heard the respect that we have for your community. And I don't expect you to just rely on hearing it. We will demonstrate it as we move forward. So thank you for this time.
We, we know that and we appreciate it. All right. Thank you again. All right. Our next item.
Are we going to do public comment on that?
Yeah, I guess we should do public comment on that. Sorry about that.
Do they want to stay for public comment?
They may want to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once in a while. I felt the love so much, yes. But, all right, sorry, we're not going to give you up that, that quickly. We have public comment.
First up is Tess Waldzine, followed by Arthur Tober.
Hi, my name is Tess Waldzine, and I'm a Lafayette resident. But first of all, city council members, thank you for taking the time to hear from me today. And thank you, you two, for that great presentation. It's very detailed, and we appreciate your support with Louisville through CU and all of that. I'm here just to talk a little bit about this great opportunity and really just hit home the idea of sustainability for this community centered living area for CU staff and whoever ends up being for. This situation presents an incredible opportunity for Louisville to continue its vision of sustainable, economically viable, and successful infrastructure that centers our community's values first. We know that our town's top priorities really consist of sustainable development and net zero building, something that we have the chance to achieve with this deconstruction recycling of the Cinnabar area. On-site solar and in combination with possible geothermal heating and cooling could set the precedent for university housing becoming carbon neutral in addition to adequate green spaces and shading of hardscapes. Enhancing pedestrian bicyclist connections to all nearby commercial centers would also provide students and community members environmentally friendly transit options, fully embodying all of the elements of renewable energy and prioritizing beautiful green spaces. Collaborating with the university can allow us to showcase successful, sustainable development, setting the lead for other communities and towns like Louisville. And our world is no longer waiting for this climate crisis. We are living in it now. So the question is no longer if we act, but whether we act in time. So every day without action brings humankind closer to this fate, and they'll resonate with generations and damage done to the life on earth. So sustainability is very important to everyone currently. And addressing this climate crisis is also not just about mitigating the risks, but also realizing the economic opportunities that can flow from building sustainable infrastructure. And these steps are investments in a livable, livable future for generations to come. And truly, in the end, history won't remember the stock market highs in eternal economic growth. Rather, it'll remember who stood by as we watched the world burn. So this is our moment to turn crisis into opportunity and build a future that's both sustainable and full of promise for our community and everyone in Colorado. Thank you so much, and thanks again.
Thanks, Tess.
Next up is Arthur Tober, followed by John Cowley.
I'm Arthur Tauber, and I also want to encourage the city to work with CU and vice versa to make this project net zero. I've been a climate activist for a couple of years now, and one thing I've learned is while definitely possible, it's difficult to make transitions from fossil fuels to net zero, but, and it's also more expensive. So when building from the ground up, we have this great opportunity to make something amazing. For a long time now, Louisville's been a progressive and climate forward town. Making this project net zero would be a feather in the hat of Louisville, a shining example of our values and commitment to climate sustainability. Some ideas we could implement are reconstructing and recycling persistent bodies for this infrastructure. This would make building it more sustainable, obviously. And another must for this is to have some sort of on-site energy production that doesn't use fossil fuels. This could be solar or even something like geothermal, which is an interesting concept and could open up green roofs as an alternative to solar panels. And my last ask is to give this housing center easy access to bike lanes and pedestrian paths to all of the nearby commercial centers and public transit options. Incentivizing zero emission transportation in this state is very important, giving people the safety and freedom to have these options without asking them to have the responsibility of owning electric vehicles, a central step towards net zero for our whole planet. Lastly, this is a huge opportunity, not just for climate solutions, but for also creativity in the field, like, as I mentioned, geothermal and green roofing, but also more green spaces and shaded walkways. This is a chance to show off what Louisville and CU stand for. Right on the side of 36, let's show everyone what this, what our citizens and the climate mean to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is John Cowley, followed by Cindy Bedell.
Thank you for a chance, thank you for a chance to speak. I want to thank the CU representatives. I had a, a whole different set of things to say had they gone a different way. But I'm really happy that it's fundamental that you're minimizing emissions and you're setting a high bar for the rest of Louisville for a long time. As you know, there are other developments going on, the King Supers, the Pickleball Court, Redtail Ridge, the Birdie Bar, who I don't think at this point we know are attending to minimizing emissions. In the last 10 years, Louisville's business natural gas emissions have risen 50% and it's on a steady upward trend. This will be the first case, and I'm assuming maybe even no natural gas connections. That should be the trend of the future. And also in 10 years, almost all of their residents will be driving electric vehicles. So I'm assuming they're going to have sufficient EV charging for that, for that concern. And also, the, the development will affect the entrance to McCaslin, the entrance to Louisville. The facade of the building, the size of the building may well affect the, what do you call it? The facades of other buildings being built along McCaslin. So they're going to establish some part of the vision that we're going to be looking at in the comp plan for development along McCaslin. So I trust and I'm sure that their design will be first class and will inspire follow-on developers to exceed rather than fall short. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Good night.
Next up is Cindy Bedell, followed by Matt Jones.
Oh, hi, I'm Cindy Bedell. I live in Ward Two, Louisville, and I'm retired from CU, which was one of my favorite jobs of my career. So I came to speak in support of keeping our theater because the Sundance Film Festival, can you hear me? Yeah. Because the Sundance Film Festival is coming to Boulder in 2027, which interestingly enough, looks like about the same timeline as this development may start to become open. So I am someone in my family, we've supported that theater for many years, and now that it's closed, I'm going to Boulder. I'm spending my money in Boulder for dinner, for dining, for entertainment. So I'd love to spend it here again, and so would my family and friends. So I think that it's fantastic that I'm here tonight as part of a mixed use development, not just residential, that we'd keep some entertainment and arts that would benefit the whole community. And Louisville will be providing the infrastructure for the housing for the residents that are coming to this development. So to balance that, it would be great to have some income coming from a theater and maybe more entertainment venues. So AI tells me that the Sundance Film Festival generated $132 million in economic activity in 2024, including $14 million in tax revenue, $106 million in spending on hotels, dining, and shopping, created 1,730 jobs, paying $69.7 million in wages, and attracting 24,000 out of state visitors. So it'd be so wonderful to have Louisville on the map for that. Secondly, I was also happy to hear tonight that CU is paying attention to the scale and mass of what might be going in there. So pedestrian scale with meeting places, outdoor spaces, connections to the rest of the city, and paying attention that the height fits with what we have right now in Louisville. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Next up is Matt Jones, followed by Joanne Spears.
Matt Jones, I live in Ward Three in Louisville. Thank you to CU representatives that came out and did this and kept, kept us in the loop. It's great. I want to talk about two things that were in the slide deck and one that wasn't. I'm really happy about the sustainability, like goals, like you said, you heard, and what you heard in public testimony is Louisville, people are really concerned about sustainability. The other thing is not overwhelming that line. Please, something reasonable and responsible. I understand the state has primature on land use and these kinds of things, but we all want this thing to go smoothly, so scale should be reasonable, I guess is the way to say it. And finally, the thing that wasn't in the slide deck that I've been thinking about, I was just riding the AB bus back from the airport. Do you guys ride that bus? It is so great. You guys probably ride it too? Yeah. And the Flatiron Flyer. What about the parking for RTD? It should be under the same rules that are there now. So day use is free. If you park overnight, I can't remember what the fee is, but you put your money in and you do that, it should follow the RTD rules, and it shouldn't go up. We shouldn't make it harder for people to commute. So that's the third thing, but thank you for the update.
Thank you, Matt.
Hi, my name is Joanne Spears. I live at 1112 West Enclave Circle. I don't want to be like a wet blanket on this because I think it is a really good situation for Louisville, but I'm concerned about the resources that'll be expended in a situation where I'm not, I don't, I don't quite understand, and I know we don't know yet, what the economic benefit to the city will be, including, you know, open space resources, fire, police, and the Rick Center. When you're bringing in all those, that number of people and for a facility that I don't believe pays taxes, then that could be a strain on the city's resources. And perhaps this is part of the economics that I don't know and certainly hasn't been developed yet. But I think that that has to be a concern of the cities, and that's all. I don't mean to be a wet blanket, but that's what I think about.
Thanks, Joanne. Now, I think we appreciate the, all of the public comment. Just looking one last time to see if there's anybody online, but there is not. Is there any council discussion that we should engage in right now? I think some of the questions that came up in public comment might be worth discussing, but it's still early in the process.
It's your pleasure.
Looks like we're, we're happy to listen tonight. It's still pretty early, so I think you'll hear more from us as, as time goes on, I'm absolutely sure. Go ahead, Josh.
Could I ask one more question, maybe? I am curious, how does the, I actually don't know, you know, if the parking lot is currently owned by RTD or if it's rented by RTD or, and what the, you know, what the parking is likely to be like in the future?
It's a good question, and we have had a couple of meetings with RTD to start exploring that. Currently, it's under a lease, so they pay us an annual lease fee for about 153 spaces. And so what, we're very interested in continuing that and figuring out how to continue to provide that value to Louisville. To me, it's like mandatory that we deliver on that. We can't, that can't go away. So we're, we've opened the conversation with RTD. We'll have substantive conversations about how we replace that parking on the site, because obviously the site is key to getting on the stop and getting to where you're going. So that's it. It's under a lease and it will continue to be, so.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you again for all your good work, and we'll look forward to future discussions. Thanks. All right. Our next item is Resolution Number 41, Series 2025, a resolution approving an agreement for the 2025 median landscape renovations project. We've got a staff presentation from Director Blackmore, so take it away. There it is. You'd think by now I'd be trained on this. Where is the cursor? Jimmy, any advice if I can't see the cursor? There we go. Want to make sure it moves. All right. All right. Hi. Did I scare the Mayor Pro Tem away? Excellent. Good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council. Adam Blackmore, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Open Space. With me tonight is Project Manager Brian Weber. Also online is Park Superintendent Abby McNeil. Tonight's topic is a resolution approving an agreement with Be Green Doing Business as Green Landscaping to move forward with Phase Two of what we anticipate to be up to five phases for the renovations of the streetscape and medians throughout the primary corridors of Louisville. Just a little bit of a background on this particular topic, and there's quite a bit of backup information in your packet as well, and I believe a one pager with some of this information was provided in advance of the meeting as well. So apologies if this is redundant for what you've already seen. This initial design, so this topic goes back at least to 2019. The topic predates myself, Brian, and Abby. There is record of discussions as early as 2017 discussing the non-functional - Just a little bit of a background on this particular topic, and there's quite a bit of backup information in your packet as well. And I believe a one-pager with some of this information was provided in advance of the meeting as well. So apologies if this is redundant for what you've already seen. This initial design, so this topic goes back at least to 2019. The topic predates myself, Brian, and Abby. There is record of discussions as early as 2017 discussing the non-functional turf that makes up the bluegrass medians that you see everywhere, basically aside from where we have completed Phase One of this along Via Appia and McCaslin. So again, the initial design approval was in 2019. Reiterative approval for the Phase One was done in 2023. Phase One design was completed by Design Concepts and installed by Green Landscape Solutions in 2023. Phase Two funding was approved for 2024's budget and carried forward as a part of an approved budget amendment by City Council for 2025. Phase Two locations and a level of priority, which I'll get to in a second, were approved by PPLAB in December of 2024. Also, tonight, we are requesting a sole source award to Green Landscape Solutions for Phase Two. There are a variety of reasons for this, obviously being a phased approach. This particular contractor has continuity of design, technical irrigation, infrastructure planning replacements, relationships with staff, and they are also continuing with 2023 labor rates, which offers substantial financial savings as a component of this phase. Phase Two locations, again, as recommended by PPLAB in coordination with staff, excuse me, is finishing Via Appia from the area where it currently ends, close to the entrance, to the skate park area and the arboretum down through, past the police station to get to the intersection there. Primary corridor is going to be Dillon Road. If you forget, because we focus a lot on Via Appia, but another component of Phase One was 88th from Dillon, basically to the hospital or to Monarch and those phases in there. So we'd be connecting from Dillon to McCaslin through that corridor. Mostly, the medians stop having any kind of turf or conversion needs around Delia. And then we would also be able to incorporate some element of moving north on McCaslin from Dillon toward Century Drive, which is basically right where the new trees that we planted before we moved into Phase One of this project a couple of years ago, we planted the trees now three years ago. We don't want to, we're not ready to renovate that with the budding trees and the areas between there and Via Appia. So that's a little bit of the location and scope. So some reasons and benefits of this particular time and this particular location. So Phase Two aligns with the ash tree removal. This tree, this picture was just taken last week, if you haven't been in the area. The majority of the medians through the Dillon corridor especially are dying or decaying. Ash trees that have been infected by the emerald ash borer. And so there's going to be some level of maintenance done in this corridor as we move forward. That level of maintenance is either going, the trees are coming out no matter what. They're a safety hazard, and they've exhausted their life. So the trees will be coming out. We also have irrigation infrastructure that's at the end of its useful life and is a consistent challenge for parks maintenance as well as for just general turf health. Mentioned, I appreciate all the mentions tonight about the sustainability goals and the focus of this community and of this body. The primary driver, my understanding from as far back as eight, nine years ago, was to convert non-functional turf, which this is bluegrass, non-functional turf, heavy water demand, you know, and doesn't really do anything of value aside from look green, which I appreciate when it does. But so it aligns with the turf conversion. We've also, as we've traversed into B. City USA, been asked to consider pollinator-friendly plantings and any type of conversion or effort that we're doing. And this is heavily focused on encouraging and promoting pollinator-friendly plantings, which will be a component of Phase Two as well, continuation of some of the shrubs and the grasses that we used in, excuse me, Phase One. They're still aligned with the water conservation effort. If you weren't on the council as we went through the Phase One discussions, this project is similar in size to Phase One. It's about 60,000 square foot of turf conversion. And that, with typical irrigation, with the way that we're irrigating the bluegrass currently, saves about a million gallons of water annually. Phase One has shown that savings. We anticipate a similar phase, similar savings with Phase Two. Part of that comes from a revised seed mix, which I'll get into in a second, that we're fully aware that some issues with Phase One's seed mix needed to be addressed. We've addressed that moving into Phase Two, so hopefully we can chat about that tonight as well. But it also comes, like I said, from new irrigation infrastructure, better use of our new controllers that we're installing in the area, new heads, just the general things that come with new and improved, efficient irrigation infrastructure. The tree replacements that we mentioned, so in the spirit of sustainability, as you can see, these trees right here aren't doing much to contribute to our urban canopy. These trees would all be replaced, similar to what we've done in Phase One, with future, robust, canopy-focused streetscape equivalent trees. And so that's going to be a large component of this phase and future phases because I would imagine, unless we're given direction to move away from this project completely, I'll be back in front of you again at some point in time talking about the next phases. And this is going to be a continued theme of our effort in the way that we design and we plan these areas. Last bullet is just familiarity, maybe, or a reminder that a recent House Bill 25-1113, beginning January 1st of 2026, specifically calls out streetscapes and medians. Any bluegrass conversions or any work done in bluegrass medians or streetscapes doesn't allow you to replace it with bluegrass. It has to be replaced with water-wise, ziruscape, you know, drought-tolerant, low-water-use type of landscaping. And so we're ahead of the game with this. Part of what we'll be asking for tonight, as we have this discussion, is if the current proposed look, feel, design isn't what council is looking for, then I would just ask, as we get direction for what council would be looking for for future renovations, because we are, the reason we brought this topic up is they are all aged. They are all running into the same issues as it relates to turf quality and conditions, soil quality and condition, irrigation infrastructure, tree health, just a lot of stuff that comes along with, you know, 30, 40, 50-year-old medians. And so we're going to be tackling all of those at the same time. And so just as we go through a design discussion, if there's a desire for a look and a feel, I would just reiterate that that look and feel can't be what it currently is if we're going to do any type of renovations moving forward. So just something to keep in mind. So again, as I mentioned, we received quite a bit of feedback from this body and from the community regarding some components of Phase One. So some lessons learned from Phase One, just, there's a lot. This is just the synopsis. As I mentioned, this project was inherited by myself and Brian and Abby. It was already in the budget, and it focused on really honing in on native plantings, pollinator-friendly plantings, reducing water consumption, upgrading our irrigation, so on and so forth. And so, you know, I'll just, kudos to Brian and Abby for, I think we did our best. I think there's some lessons learned that we're remediating, and I'm very confident and comfortable with that level of remediation as it's moving forward. It's a long-term remediation. It is seed. It's not sod, so it's going to take a little while to restore like any other seed would. But that being said, the lesson learned from Phase One is we have a new seed mix featuring grasses at lower height, including wildflowers, which you've seen, if you go down Via Appia, you can see some of that in areas that have been hydroseeded within the last year. As we've made some improvements or had to replace some components of Phase One. It's called Verge, and I'll get into that in a second. Very pollinator-friendly, grass maximum heights of around six to seven inches. Flowers can be higher, but for the most part, the standard cover that you would be talking about, which would be the majority of these medians, would be that mix. We've also learned, lived and learned, that we need lower rock wall heights of the decorative walls that you see in the middle of the medians. We ran into a number of just, you know, at some point potentially violating site triangles or otherwise, even if they weren't violating site triangles, they were uncomfortable for our drivers along Via Appia especially. And so we've learned from that. And so the scope of this perspective phase have a maximum height that's much lower than the current standard along Via Appia. We, similar to that, no walls are within a vehicle site distance. So not only are they lower, but also the locations that we're putting them. Again, we've kind of lived and learned from left and right turns as it relates to those walls to be cognizant of that in our design. And then revisions to the plant schedule based on the rate of success. So again, Colorado soils are tough sometimes, hard to get certain plants, even native plants, to take as we start to work through trying to remediate these areas and to bring in new shrubs. So we've really taken notice of what's worked and what hasn't worked in Phase One, and we're incorporating that into Phase Two's planning effort. Another benefit is that the project contract currently, as proposed, and in front of you this evening, is $45,000 under the available funding. Again, a large driver of that is the continuity of contractors and a continuation of 2023 labor rates as part of our driver for a sole source request as well. Here is Verge. So this is the look and the feel of what your new ground cover, primary area, would look like. As you can see, heavy in pollinator-friendly plantings. It's got the ones that are popping right now, no pun intended, are the poppies along Via Appia. You see a lot of the orange poppies. And they're very good at repopulating and user-friendly, maintenance-friendly. And so this is the seed mixture that we would be going with. I would note that this is also the seed mixture that we are using to restore Phase One, which I don't have, we can get into the technical if you'd like to this evening, but the gist of the lesson learned from Phase One was the seed mix, while it is native, had an intention of using basically an annual rye mix to create an initial layer of ground cover, and then that would allow the native seeds to take hold. The problem that we ran into, that isn't totally uncommon with seed, is as soon as we hydroseeded and said, okay, take your time, now we're going to let this go natural, we had two weeks, if you'll remember, of just really excessive rain. And so that did a couple of things. Number one, it matured the rye to its full height much quicker than we thought it was going to. And it also kept the rye from allowing the native seed to come in. And so the way that we have learned to treat that and to turn that rye grass back into an annual, and if you've noticed the amount of, and that's what, a lot of the attention with what is being called weeds is this tall rye grass. There have been weeds. I'm acknowledging that, and we have treated that, and we're continuing to work on that. But the last year to this year, it's been cut in half, if not more, on the amount of rye grass that we have because we learned to attack it early, and we started mowing it quicker last year. We did the same thing this year. We anticipate within another growing cycle or two, this Verge mix and the native mix that was already there will completely drown out the rye that was only supposed to be there for one season. So in addition to the two weeks and the issues that that created for the rye grass and the medians at Via Appia, it also delayed the planting schedule and the project schedule for McCaslin. And so by the time we got the planting down in McCaslin, we were at the very, very end of the seed manufacturers' recommended time to put down that seed mix. And instead of waiting, since we had done all of the rest of the work, we elected to put the seed mix down. It didn't take as fast as the weeds did. The weeds overpowered the seed coming into the spring. What survived of the seed was, again, the rye mixed with those weeds. So McCaslin has really been a challenge. Again, same maintenance practices. We're starting, we've upgraded our equipment. We've outfitted our equipment that's much better at mowing, effectively, efficiently. We're using an electric push mower. You'll see it. It's got 20-inch wheels on the back. Very, very sweet ride. And so we're, again, we're working through that process that it's going to take a couple of grow cycles to get that rye grass worked out. But again, ultimately, eventually, we'll get that Verge and that original seed mix restored, and the standard ground cover will be back to that maximum height of eight to 12 inches of native grasses. So that's Verge. I'm happy to answer any questions about that as we go through. Just some additional information to share with council, if you're unaware. We anticipate the full makeover of the center medians to take up to five phases, as mentioned. Those phases currently are all about the same price, which is similar to the price that you see tonight. If we were to continue, you know, considering sole source, if we were to just keep on keeping on with moving on to the next one, that's what we have outlined for what it would take to get there. Again, Phase Two was intended to be done last year. There was two reasons why it wasn't done last year. Number one is we took the year to take the feedback from the community and the lessons learned on Phase One and to really work on a management plan and best practices so that when we came to you back with Phase Two, we were more informed on how we could be maintaining or bettering these future phases. Secondary part of that was we devoted a lot of design efforts to Sunflower and Enclave Park and getting that rebuilt and working within the confines of our GOCO grant, and just prioritizing that in Phase Two of the medians just did not rise to the priority last year. So that's why it's coming to you this year as a carryforward request. Currently, in the existing capital improvement plan, we have funding set aside in '26, '27, '28 to finish the next three phases. And we'll see if that continues after this upcoming budget cycle. So here's the next steps that we are open to some discussion and direction on. So first option would be proceed with sole source contract to Green Landscape Solutions as proposed and move into Phase Two at the, once the contract is executed. And they are ready. They're ready to go. So we could start that as soon as we have the approval and be in line with the growing cycle and the planting cycle that we'd be looking to do. Second option would be for council to request modifications to the bid process and direct staff to open Phase Two to a public bidding process. Again, that direction could impact the scope, timing, and/or feasibility of completing Phase Two of this project. You could request modifications to the proposed design, and we will seek alternative pricing estimates, which could result in a design fee or delays as we work through those modifications. In addition to that, we could also discuss modifications that could be worked into the existing agreement, you know, things like colors, shrubs, whatever you kind of want to talk about. So that's something we could chat about as well. I'd reiterate that the current planting list, the current seed mix, the current design has gone through two iterations of the PPLAB process, and they have supported what is before you this evening, so it's just something to reiterate. And then, or we could, you could direct staff to put this particular phase on hold indefinitely or remove this project from the Pro CIP list, at which point we would move on to other projects, and we would still do the required maintenance that's required in our bluegrass areas, things like tree removal, irrigation upgrades, that kind of stuff. But again, if we are doing that work in the medians after January 1st, 2026, we could not replace the areas that are impacted by our work with bluegrass. And so we would still need some element of a design for water-friendly planting. Have to go through that, so. That is my presentation. We're happy to take any questions or have discussion. Adam, questions from council? Yes, Councilmember V.
Thank you. Yes. I, as I drive around these areas where the medians have been already changed, most of them look wonderful. My issue, my only issue, really, is the visibility, the sightlines. In particular, the sightline as you're turning left off McCaslin going north into the enclave because you can't see the cars in that left lane coming down because they're right up against the median. So something that is either cutting them down, I noticed that you did just mow that. So that was wonderful. It helps a lot. But I think with all intersections where there, someone is making a left-hand turn, they have to be able to see if somebody is coming. And if you've got foot-tall shrubs of any kind, they can't, but especially on a slope. So that was my concern, but otherwise, I think it looks great.
Councilmember V. Councilmember Cooperman.
A few questions. So you were talking about the new trees that were planted along part of McCaslin, and that, so I was curious, you know, is it, is the best option to basically replace trees and replace the other plantings at the same and replace the other plantings at the same time?
Yeah, it's kind of two separate situations. So this particular item, in front of you tonight, is 100% yes. That's our feeling, is that the ash trees need to be removed so we're able to, you know, do the renovation of the entire area while also, you know, removing the trees we were already planning to remove. As it relates to the new trees on McCaslin, the reason that it's not in front of you tonight, and the reason that, you know, my recommendation to P-Plab was to consider stopping the renovation of McCaslin at that level, is because they're new trees, because they're maturing. As I mentioned, they were done prior to budget approval for median renovations. So my intention would not, I think they're great trees, and I think they have the potential to be great trees for that corridor. And so my intention would be to work with the revised irrigation that we have in those medians for those trees to a future redesign that allows as many of them to stay as we can. But part of that ability to stay is going to be dependent on how mature they get and how they're able to withstand the stress of the work we'd be doing around them, and they're not ready for that yet.
Okay, that's helpful. And then, so one thing I'm curious about, so the, the design has these pink concrete sections. Is that purely supposed to be aesthetic, or do they serve some kind of structural role in the median, or not really?
Yeah, so it's primarily aesthetic, that the idea of trying to create some rhythm or kind of breaking up materials and recognizing that these are long stretches, there's kind of a variety of landscape treatments that you can apply. So it's mostly a design issue, but it was inspired by the brick or faux brick kind of around the city. And so the original intention was to do the same stamped concrete as the brick that you see around town. However, the Phase One budget could not afford the stamping, so we stuck with the color that specified for that treatment, but without the brick stamp. But the color came from, is the same concrete color that's used in that faux brick that you see around town.
Okay. And how does the, like, the cost per square foot compare between the concrete and other parts of the median, like the actual planted parts?
We'd have to follow up on that, yeah, to do some, like, cost per square foot analysis, like compared to like a seeded, the seeded area versus a gravel. Yeah, I'd need to follow up on some calculations for that.
Okay. And then just one more question. So just thinking about the future phases, what counts as sort of the medians in the primary corridors? So besides the ones we've talked about, which other corridors would be part of the future phases?
Yeah, so the goal would be to finish McCaslin all the way up to South Boulder Road. So it would basically be from Dillon to South Boulder Road on McCaslin to finish Via Appia to the east, all the way out to South Boulder Road, and then to finish South Boulder Road between McCaslin and, I believe, Highway 42.
Right. Okay.
Cherry has already been done in the past, so that's why that's not a, kind of within the scope of this.
Okay, thanks.
So I just, first of all, wanted to thank you guys. I know that this project probably hasn't even turned out the way that you thought it would originally, and that it did predate you and a lot of the, your input on what the design would have been, how it would have been executed. This is a picture that was actually sent in by a resident. You did just mow this, but this was just earlier this week. I just wanted all of us to have an opportunity to see, when you're in a car and you are making a left, the obstacle that those weeds present, I don't know if you can tell, but there's a red car in the middle coming down that hill. And unless you're looking really closely and paying really heavy attention, there's also cyclists that you're trying to navigate as a driver to make sure that you're seeing them, the danger, and I, we've already talked about it, I understand you've mowed them down, but every time, and we had a massive rainstorm today, those weeds will be back. And I'm really concerned and was curious to ask what the plans are going to be if it's not, those kind of seeding is not removed and redone versus just waiting it out for a couple of years? How often you will be able to get mowing done? Do we have to wait? Residents have to cut their weeds when they get above six feet or were noticed by the city, and this seems to be just, I just was curious to see how that will be managed if we don't redo this and make it right.
So a couple of things. There are some weeds in that median. The primary, like, what you see, though, directly in front of you is a shrub planting. And behind that, and what was causing, my understanding, causing the majority of the concern for sightlines, is bunched ornamental grasses. And so that's what was cut down. It was, we cut back individualized ornamental grasses, the same ornamental grasses that you could see at the intersection of McCaslin and Via Appia, they're just not blocking a view turning left. And so our intention, you know, this was, I just want to be clear that from what we can tell in a vehicle, the standard seed mix, things like the rye and that kind of thing, isn't the current inhibitor that brought this concern forward. So what we're considering now, since this is, you know, brought to our attention a couple of days ago, is what to do with those ornamental grasses, what the sightline looks like for the shrubs that are at the bottlenose at the front of that, and that may require transplanting or a complete replacement. And that's certainly warranted and something that we're able to do in-house. And then it's just picking the right species. And it may, it may end up being where it just gets replaced with the Verge seed mix, and it just becomes, you know, kind of pollinator-looking patches. We'd still, we haven't had enough of that discussion yet, but yeah, there's, fully recognize the concern and hear the resident that brought that to our attention. And yeah, our immediate maintenance plan, if you want to call it that, is to continue to reduce the height of those ornamental grasses, as well as, we're now fully caught up on mowing. So part of the reason that it did look pretty overgrown is because we were about two weeks behind on our mowing, and thank goodness, we've had a little bit of break with the rain, and so we've been able to get through the initial mow of the rye that was there and start to get that knocked down. So I think that'll help with the look and the feel of that median as we move forward. But in the short term, we hear, we hear the concern, and we'll continue to either cut back that regenerative grass, or we will replace it with something that we're not going to have the concern with.
There are a couple of other areas in the city that I've seen some lovely boulders, and there's flowering, you know, low, just ground-level plantings. Is there anything in the new plan that's moving from taller species, not just with the Verge, but with the taller grasses? Or there's some, there's random, I think, other types of shrubs that are put in there that are still, like, you know, a good eight, 10 inches tall? The ground cover ones seem to be the more appropriate to not get in the way of line of sight for anything, or create distractions, but still be very pollinator-friendly, which is really awesome, and create it like, or just a smooth look that maybe more mimics transplanting all of our smooth grasses that people were used to looking, has a more manicured look to it. Are there any plans to have more of that in the new phases? I think that's what I was curious about, is how, what succeeded, in your opinion, and staff's opinion, and what didn't? So what is being replaced? Will all of the ornamental grasses go away so that we don't have those heights everywhere? Or are they staying?
So I would say the biggest evaluation is the locations of things. So where this issue arises is in those site-distance triangles. That's a kind of engineering, we're getting into the engineering jargon there, but basically a calculation of required visibility based on the width of a road, the speed of a road, et cetera. So that triangle grows and shrinks based on a unique intersection characteristic. The other aspect to that is a, as defined by ASHTO, American Association of Highway, and something, I can't quite fill it in, but there's a, the site, the site view line is based on a 42-inch height. So that's the average height of a driver in a vehicle, that their eyes would be 42 inches from the ground. So the design condition that we instructed our design team to meet was the ASHTO standard of a 42-inch visibility, taking into account a six-inch curb height and 36 inches of vegetation growth. So aside from that, I think on this project, we've run into meeting that standard, however, failing to meet people's perception of safety at certain intersections, and we've responded to that. For instance, at Pine and Via Appia, eliminating design criteria that met that standard, however, failed to meet our community's perception of safety. We've responded to that. So I think this is another instance of that. I didn't get a chance to take a tape measure to those before they were cut back, because kudos to Abby's team, they're on it like that. But I would say what we need to take a closer look at, there's still opportunity to do that in Phase Two, would be to say, in those site triangles, what is the height of the vegetation that we're proposing there? Maybe dialing that back to say 42 inches may be the technical standard for the highway safety of the United States, but in the city of Louisville, we want to look at 36, 24, 18, whatever that criteria is to satisfy what this community is looking for. So I would say in Phase Two currently, there is that same type of grass at 36 inches, which would be right at the max height. Perhaps we want to substitute that with a different variety of grasses you're suggesting that would be at a lower overall, you know, full height expectation, so.
Yeah, I, that's what I was hoping for is just, and thank you so much for that, Brian, and helping all of us actually understand as well. I think, this is less of a question, if you want me to wait, Mayor, I can. I was going to make a statement instead.
We're going to talk.
Okay.
In a little bit. If you, yeah, you can stick to questions.
Sure. So then, it would be that we're not too late then in this phase. I mean, obviously, we could just stop the whole project, but I mean, not too late as far as creating a whole new standard. So it isn't just, we have, we don't have to do the complicated engineering and say, oh, at certain places, maybe it should be this height. Instead, let's make it low everywhere, make it much easier, whether it's a cyclist trying to see, whether it's a car that's trying to see, because those standards are obviously for cars on flat surfaces, not even on hills, as the example kind of presents. And I think we're getting a lot of residential feedback, especially, and it's kind of nice that we, we almost had the delay, because we're able to see what the next year brought. Unusual rains, climate change is producing a lot of unusual weather that we're going to have to kind of manage around. And rather than, I guess what I'm asking is, so given that, can we, like you suggested, Brian, make those changes and make a whole new standard instead of saying specific locations have this versus others?
I think the standard, especially if it's lesser than, or I don't know how you'd phrase it, but if it's more strict, you know, I think that's at the discretion of the dice. We're certainly not past any point with that. These are standard, just landscaping, plant, change-out kind of discussions that we have all the time with our landscaping contractors, and especially Green, we have them for a number of projects around town, very knowledgeable, and they'd be happy to provide some alternative ideas.
And as Councilmember Cooperman was kind of alluding to, maybe looking at what the cost differential would be if we were to remove some more of the concrete and have more of that be living area versus the, I understand it was for aesthetics, you know, maybe we can get a similar aesthetic with different kinds of plantings versus concrete hardscapes like that, or boulders that plants can grow around versus concrete where they can't. Things, I think that's kind of, sort of what he was alluding to, and I'd love to see if that's possible within the budget. And one of the, I guess it really, maybe it was sort of an option, sort of not, is how accountable is the current landscape company to, or is it fully staff's responsibility at this point, to managing or fixing a lot of the medians that a lot of residents just, it's not just the visual danger in intersections, it's the visual appearance that they're entirely too tall, that it's requiring a lot of staff maintenance, obviously, to, to keep them to a height that doesn't just look overgrown and unmanaged?
They're responsible when they've worked outside of the scope that they were given. And so there is a component there where this is what we had asked for, and they've been very responsive if we've wanted modifications, back to the lesson learned discussion, things like reducing wall heights, taking walls completely out, rehydro seeding for us. Last year, that was done using, you know, contingency funds and other capital dollars that could align with that. We had them come in a couple of days and do pretty substantial weed removal, you know, in areas that it was overtaking the ability for native grass to grow. And so ultimately, you know, it is, we feel, like I mentioned during the presentation, we feel that we have a good management plan with Phase One now, and with a couple more growing cycles especially, working out that rye that isn't supposed to be there, that it's going to be very similar in look and feel to kind of what you're seeing for, propose for Phase Two. So, you know, from that perspective, there isn't a whole lot more in terms of accountability that would come along to the contractor. Now it's on staff to adjust our maintenance practices and our restoration practices to, because it is, you mentioned at the beginning, like, it wasn't intended to be something that we had to quote-unquote "fix" for two years, but sometimes that happens. And, you know, we've, I think we're getting a plan in place that's going to make that much more efficient and effective, because it'll require less of that hands-on maintenance because we get a hold on the stuff that's really been the pain over the last couple of years, so.
So the current intention is to not change, but just kind of allow nature to, with the new seeding that you put in, to take hold and hope that we have the right weather to allow for that to happen at this point?
Yeah, we're, we're very confident in the success we've had over the past year with the Verge being able to take over the rye. And we feel that, you know, there's, there's only so many things that we could do, like if the ornamental grasses, for example, we can take those out, we can put something shorter in, you know, these planting beds are easier to do than the full-on ground cover. The full-on ground cover is, you know, any type of remediation, you're either talking about pretty substantial herbicide applications, or you're talking about scraping and starting over, and still dealing with the timelines that, and the variability that comes with seed mixes instead of sods.
So if we did, or like, the, the community is asking for this to be scraped and redone, like portions especially that we see on McCaslin, would it be, would it be possible then to maybe just change the scope of Phase Two so that portion of it doesn't get completed so that you can fix and repair some of those areas in Phase One?
Well, I think it would be a discussion about what fix and repair means. As I mentioned, I feel like we're making good progress on the ground cover areas, and to completely scrape those out for a new hydro seeding in areas where we're attempting to restore could be potentially counterproductive. As it relates to this specific scope, that's not part of the agreement before you tonight, and that's, that would require a different level of modification to what we're asking the contractor to be able to provide and price out. It's not to say that, you know, if there's a desire for council to bring that back to you as a separate project, because there's, you know, cohesion, or at least a majority that feel like there's areas that could be, in your words, fixed. You know, we can price that out and see what funding is available to do that work as well. Because we are, as mentioned, this current proposed Phase Two does have funding that would potentially be asked to be carried forward. So if we want to talk about that as a scope of a different project, I'd be happy to.
I'd like to get to some public comment here. Do we have people who'd like to make a public comment?
First up is Joanne Spears, followed by Catherine Smith.
Good evening, I'm the resident who took those pictures. I'm trying to understand.
Joanne, can you turn your mic on?
That must be it. I'm trying to understand, when you say growing season, so we're looking at another two or three years before we see the Verge, is that right? Because that would be the growing season?
Man.
Talk to the microphone.
Well, no, talk to us.
Oh, sorry about that. So I'm trying to understand how that median will ultimately be Verge, and then it sounds like the Verge then doesn't get mowed. Would that be fair to ask? Am I allowed? to ask? Am I allowed to ask, or I can give?
No.
Okay, sorry.
The question stops.
That would be my question.
Okay, good.
And, and the, what's blocking the view, as Adam indicated, is there's the native grasses. So, there's flowers that are easily over a foot and a half, I would say. And then behind them would be the native grasses, and they're separated by the brick segments. And so, it just seems to me that a lower ground cover in that area would make a big difference, as well as changing out where those native grasses are. So, it seems like that would be an easy fix. And then, there's a tree there that may or may not be ultimately a problem as it fills out. So, there's, and I want to thank you for talking about and explaining The Verge, and staff for doing that. I think, I'm not opposed to all of these changes to make them sustainable and natural and pollinating and all those great things, but I'm concerned about the design and how it's going to look, given that McCaslin is such an entrance into the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Next up is Catherine Smith, followed by Cindy Bedell.
Hi, I'm Catherine Smith, Ward Three. And I just wanted, I'll let you know my exact height, five foot two, so I'm really sympathetic to all the complaints about limited sightlines. And I am supportive of lowering the height of vegetation. And then, as a native plant gardener myself, I want to commend the city's staff for taking on the conversion of these medians. I know how tough the gardening can be and how results vary from year to year. And I just want to say, attaboy, go at it.
Thank you, Catherine.
Next up is Cindy Bedell.
Hi, I'm Cindy Bedell, Ward Two, Lewisville. So, I just want to remind us that there are other options for cool green landscaping besides Kentucky bluegrass. The war on the turf has gone a little bit too far, in my opinion. One of the reasons Lewisville has been attractive is the pretty green trees and grass as you drive through town. Now, sometimes I feel like I've moved to Phoenix and I've never even sold my house. So, I'm just sad to see our public medians and landscapes converted from cool green to hot rocks, concrete strips, or unattractive and fire hazard brown wood chips. So, I'd like us to, yes, stop replacing living landscape with concrete strips. So, medians of concrete strips, it's like you're driving down Colfax or some other ugly urban streetscape. There are water-wise grasses, such as dwarf fescue, which I've planted in my yard slowly, overseeding. And once it gets established, it needs hardly any water. There's buffalo grass, ry, there's lots of other grasses that people know better than me that are water-wise. There's also spreading ground covers, like spreading periwinkle that are attractive and green, require no mowing. One of my neighbors has an entire lawn of spreading periwinkle. It's green, it has flowers, he hasn't had to mow it in years. So, when I ride my bike along the roadways, roadways that are now lined with rock on a summer evening, there's just waves of heat radiating off these rocks. They've been absorbing the heat all day, and now they're out gassing it, I guess you could say. So, some people consider rock more sustainable, but I think it might be contributing to the heat island effect, which can make us use more air conditioning. So, I think instead of rock, we should consider green water-wise grass or green spreading ground cover. And also, these brown wood chips and these rocks, they provide no habitat for our urban wildlife, which is barely hanging on with all the urbanization. So, I guess in summary, I'm just encouraging us to think a little more broadly. Let's consider water-wise grasses, let's consider spreading ground covers. And, you know, I have ash trees in my yard that are doing great. They don't have the emerald ash borer yet, or the ash borer. And I don't know why we're proactively removing all our ash trees that are healthy. So, if we have to, can we put in other trees? There are lots of shade trees that will do well in our climate. I know, because I've researched this. So, if we have to take them out, please replace them with other shade trees. And then, you know, the pollinator medians, it's a great idea, but they're in the middle of four or five lanes of traffic. So, I suspect some of them are just ending up on our windshields. So, I'm not sure how effective that is. So, anyway, thank you for considering green options instead of rock and brown mulch. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anybody else? Anybody online? Nope. Okay. Well, let's bring it back to council for some discussion. I guess there's no discussion. Yeah, Councilmember.
Appreciate the work you guys are doing. I think you've heard the feedback from the community on the things that we don't like as much. And I hope in Phase Two, you make some slight adjustments so that it's slightly better.
Thank you. So, I really just do want to start out with the thank you. I know that this is a lot of hard work, and I know this is a very involved community. I think, like we heard from one of the residents, everybody likes the idea that we are using a million gallons of water less every single year or more, that it is much more environmentally friendly, that we're going more native. It's a great idea, but not losing that feel, that attention and time. It doesn't necessarily, I think a lot of residents aren't really looking for it to look like open space, but still have more of a park feel versus an open space feel. I think that's one of the best, easy ways to kind of convey some of that. And when the, when the plantings get really tall, that's when, I mean, seriously, even over like eight inches, that's when we start hearing a lot of comments from the people in the community, or people even outside of our community, who are driving through and you meet them at another meeting, or out at a restaurant, and they're like, what, what happened to your medians? It's like, well, they're in transition. And, but, it is still a reputation for many years. I really so appreciate the attention to making the change to The Verge, or even lower, as was brought up, more ground cover, like, am I trying to say, the sprawling, the periwinkle's a great example. It is, it never needs to be mowed, and it just really is lovely. It's not walkable space, so we don't have to worry about it being trampled and destroyed. It is just ornamental. And I appreciate the need to remove the ash borer, or the ash trees, even the ones that are completely damaged. I know that there's a lot, we've heard for a couple of years now, that please don't take them out. But I understand if they don't, if we don't, and then they become damaged, the kind of liability and the expense to staff, it's smarter to be proactive. I will ask one question, though. Does Verge have to be mowed, since it was asked?
Yeah, not nearly as much. As mentioned, you know, its max height is typically six inches. It's also, what's the beauty of this particular mix, and just for the record, I appreciated the comments, I've got the mix. It's a native red fescue, blue grama, mixed in with annual and perennial wildflowers and other cool season grasses. So, to Cindy's point, it is made up of a lot of what she had mentioned. And so, it does, but the beauty of it is, when mowed, it's reproductive, it encourages reproductive actions, it doesn't kill it. And so, you know, as you, a good example is the poppies that are coming up as we mow the area on Via Appia, you get more and more orange every time that we do it. So, very, much less frequent mowing. Right now, we're mowing the current, every four to five weeks, depending on the rains. It would, we would anticipate, you know, a max of maybe a couple times mowing season. And so, you know, it's not intended to need to be mowed very often.
Okay. Yeah, so, I appreciate that. And I, do we have spots where we've put The Verge in, that are, they're like successful, and they're like the finished product that we can kind of have people go take a look and?
Yeah, the closest thing is, it's right between, what would that be? It's just north of Pine, where there was a, where we had the site triangle issues. Is that north? What direction is that?
Oh, east, east of Pine?
East, I'm directionally illiterate, especially in this town. But, you know, you can see where that's, that hydro seed is starting to take effect. We also have a nice patch on the other side of the fire department, right between the rec center and the fire department, that right now is mowed, but it's been very successful. And that portion is actually what's led to us overseeding throughout our medians with this new product, so.
Okay. So, I think it sounds like, and I'm, and again, I'm so happy that you guys are paying really close attention to a lot of the things that we're hearing as well from residents, that they would really enjoy seeing something that did not grow so tall. I think you would enjoy something you didn't have to maintain so often. Everybody likes the incredible efforts of your team to reduce the water use. That's fantastic. But if we can make a even greater concerted effort to put very, very low-growing plantings in, not the tall native grasses, this is just the constant feedback we're having, because all everybody recalls it, is weeds. And it's too far, when you're looking across two lanes of traffic, to identify, for most residents, I'm sure there's some who absolutely can do this, which I'm very impressed with, but to identify a native plant versus a weed, it's just tall and sparse, and it feels not attractive. And when you're driving past it at 35 miles an hour, has a similar look and feel. But there are beautiful patches on Via Appia where we see these, like, low-lying flowers that are spreading out, and it's amazing. And if we can have that look and feel in all of the ones that we've done, and I, I'm just going to implore everyone that we ask you to please do not just let us wait several years to see a change in some of these Phase One medians, especially where we get the greatest amount of feedback, like along that stretch on McCaslin that's been done, just north of Via Appia. Probably taking out the native grasses. And the other picture that was there was one where you could see that it was super sporadic, like it's burned out with weeds and stuff. And using more pesticide, I don't think is what anybody in this community wants. So, that's where I was curious about taking some of the money from Phase Two and redirecting it, instead of adding more to this budget, and re-managing, instead of fixing, Adam, those Phase One sections, so that maybe that does mean they have to get scraped and started over, just to improve it and make it so that it is easier for these residents. You're not having to come literally like every week or two with weed whackers and try and mow those sections, but we just fix the problem right away. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but that would be my relaying the opinion of dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, of people who comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton, and then Councilmember Cooperman.
Thank you. First of all, Adam and team, thank you for all the work that you do. I mean, by industry standards, you have a very, very lean team, where you provide a high level of service to this community. So, the fact that you're able to pivot so quickly to try and fix what were lessons learned in Phase One is commendable, and I think it needs to be explicitly acknowledged tonight. That mower is impressive. I have seen it, the 20-inch wheel one. But, you know, in addition to that, not, not in this room tonight, but I have seen via email, some, well, tonight was constructive criticism, but via email, I've seen some not-so-constructive criticism come in the door. And yet, your team has managed to reflect and take that and incorporate it into your lessons learned. So, thank you for that as well, because the work that you do is so much public-facing, in a way that some of our other work isn't. So, I can imagine that can be hard on a daily basis to receive that in that way. Specifically with what you presented tonight, you know, from a policy position, it sounds to me like you've gotten some great feedback about plant height and revaluing that. And I have confidence that in Phase Two, you'll incorporate that feedback in lessons learned. And so, I'm looking forward to seeing the next few phases, and I'm confident that your team will continue to reflect on lessons learned, route through PPLAB, who is a team of experts to help with this as we move this forward to completion. So, thank you. Please pass it on to the team members who weren't here tonight as well.
I thought maybe I'd sort of lay out sort of priorities from my perspective. So, I think having trees that contribute to our canopy is maybe my top priority for medians. And so, I think we're doing very well with that. And I support replacing the ash trees as you've been doing. And then, maybe next is not introducing any new hardscape, including as rocks. So, I don't know, I particularly don't like the addition of concrete, if it's not really for any structural purpose. I'd rather that we just have plants there. You know, in terms of, in terms of the plantings, I think it's, I think it's sort of about just a reorientation about, you know, what people consider to be aesthetically pleasing or not. You know, I would be perfectly happy if, you know, our meetings were, medians were like just bursting meadows, you know, setting aside any issues about sightlines. And I think it just takes a, you know, a reorientation to accept that kind of thing as, oh, yes, this is a fine thing to have in a median. But, in any case, putting that aside, I would be very happy to have, you know, low-lying plants. I think there are a lot of great options for that. And, you know, they could be very low-lying, you know, I have some of those kinds of things in places in my own yard. And so, I think, yeah, I guess what I'd like to see maybe in the next phase is, if we can, to eliminate the concrete. And because we've had the feedback around the heights, I would be very happy to go with something that's low to the ground.
Okay. Councilmember Fahy.
I just want to also add my thanks for what you've done so far. It's all been very nice. We're now seeing the results of some decisions that maybe weren't the best. And my main concern is with the sightlines on the slopes. Driving uphill and turning left is very difficult. So, as one of the residents mentioned, I'm 5'2 3/4", and I drive a leaf, which is a very small, low car, and my sightline is like here. So, I'm blocked by anything that's growing in a median. So, I would like anything that you can do, especially when you start looking at what you're going to put in on South Boulder Road on the slope, it's really critical to keep the sightline open. Thank you.
All right. Any other comment? I think, I was kind of going into this meeting thinking that this was going to be maybe a more acrimonious or challenging discussion than it is. It seems like there's a few, and I mean, maybe not acrimonious, difficult, challenging. But it seems like the comments that we've heard, and we've heard comments about safety and about a desire, I think almost universally for more low-lying plants. I, I'm not sure we've got any consensus on the ash trees, except with you. All right. People are fine with those?
Yeah.
All right. And, you know, I certainly appreciate, like, not expanding the hardscape. But I, the real question before us is whether we want to move to Phase Two, and whether there's any specific, you know, I guess we can start with a motion, and to, you know, we can move forward just to try to get the thing, because we've got, we've got some additional issues that we've got to deal with tonight, and it's after eight. So, looking at time check. Yep.
Maybe a question or suggestion? Maybe a question or suggestion. So Director Blackmore, in your slide about alternatives, right, one of them was to, I believe, to, you know, maybe try to make a few modifications to the current contract. Do you think that, sort of the consensus of suggestions, would it sort of, would it fit within the contract that we currently have before us to make those few modifications? Or?
It would, assuming that I'm hearing what you're saying. You know, I think that we'll reevaluate a redesign of the hardscape area to consider a reduction or removal of concrete. We'll consider, right now, we have a 42-inch height maximum on our potential plantings. We can, I'd be happy to take a direction on what a max height would be, so we're not kind of shooting from the hip with that, because we can give that to the contractor to kind of work through various options that align with some of PPLAB's desires as well. And then continue with low-level, ground-cover type of planting, similar to what we're doing with the verge ground cover throughout. So if that's what I'm hearing, then yeah, we could do that within, certainly within the proposed design.
Councilmember Heffner.
Yeah, I was just going to offer up a motion that we go ahead and approve Resolution Number 41, Series 2025, recognizing that the Director Blackmore may make certain modifications to the contract based on the discussion here tonight.
I'll second with a friendly amendment.
You're seconding, and then you're offering a second?
Then I'll offer an amendment, yes. So I'll second. My friendly amendment, Councilmember Heffner, is that funds that are allocated into the Phase 2 be utilized to repair some of the danger points and any of the high grasses, high plants, high shrubs that are located in Phase 1.
I don't accept.
Any other thoughts, comments? All right. We've got a motion and a second. Let's take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, no. Nay.
Thank you, and we'll look forward to the changes that you're going to make. What we're going to do next, it's 8:15, I'd like to, we're going to break for about 15 minutes. And then I guess there's a question for council. We can do this in one of two ways. I've talked to people about the idea of going down and doing this next kind of workshopping of the comp plan down on the floor here. We don't have to do that. We can stay up here if that would be preferable. I, yeah, looks like we've got people wanting to go down off the dais.
We have cushions.
Pardon me? What did you say? If we have cushions? You know, we can probably find some cushions for you, Councilmember Dickinson. All right, let's meet back here about 8:29, and we'll get going. Thank you all for time and energy spent so far. Thanks.
It's never going to get fixed.
June, July as well, followed up by that public open house that I mentioned. So we'd want to advertise that. We'd probably want three or four weeks minimum to get the word out on that. And then we'd go into the adoption hearing process that could take place in August with the planning commission and September for city council. So this is kind of where we're at right here, just kind of turning the corner. So I just want to talk a little bit about the public input also and how that feeds into the plan. We've heard from over 2,000 residents, that's 10% of the residents here in the city. A lot of diverse comments. Not everybody agrees on everything, certainly. There's lots of different viewpoints and visions, visions for the future of what the community can and should be. We've summarized and reviewed all of that public input. So there are summary documents. We've provided some of those to city council. They're on Engage Louisville. I just want to mention that the draft plan so far is intended to reflect the balance of all of that feedback from the community as well as feedback from council, our focus groups, planning commission, all of the boards and commissions. Lots of diverse comments, lots of competing things. I mean, you all see this too, where you have to choose between competing policies. This is intended to try to strike that balance as best we can. Not all are going to agree with all of the goals and policies, but we're trying to kind of distill down to what that overarching sentiment is of the community. This is city council's plan to adopt, so certainly you all are the most important audience and we want to make sure we're getting it right with you all. So what we're looking for tonight is for you to provide direction on the plan prior to finalizing that public review draft for July. Again, we're asking that you consider the whole body of public input, going all the way back to those initial focus groups from a year and a half ago. You know, as you're considering this, not just tonight, but into the future, we have all of the summary documents for all the public input are on Engage Louisville under the comp plan. We're happy to send those out or point you in the right direction if you're looking for any particular comment. Again, this is a long-term plan, 20-year vision, 10-year horizon for implementation. This is the policy document. Specific actions will be in that implementation matrix. And also, some of these policies don't have to be prescriptive. They don't have to have specific action steps. They can be aspirational or provide guidance for potential future actions. So there's, there's lots of ways to look at it. But what we have before you this evening again are those higher level policies to guide. Okay, so a little bit on next steps. You know, if we can keep on track for this, with this adoption schedule, there's a lot of stuff we already know we're going to do to implement. I'm going to put the PROST master plan that's underway. That's going to be a big implementation step. Impact fee update, we're hoping to do that next year as well. That's something that we have to do by ordinance and update pretty regularly. And then our land development code rewrite project, I just, this isn't everything, but I just highlighted it. That's budgeted for this year. We've gotten a grant to supplement that project. This, the intent is really to implement the land use map that you're going to look at tonight to a large extent, as well as improve our development review process. We've been hearing very clearly from council, this is a high priority to be business friendly and improve that process in order to meet our goals. We just adopted a housing plan. This would also implement those things. There's lots of state laws this would help us comply with as well that are reflected in the comprehensive plan. Okay, so today's review, we've got three topics that I want to kind of go one by one, if that's okay with council. One is to reaffirm the vision and core values, review that future land use map and land use classifications. And I'm going to try to give a overview summary of each of those, so they're a little easier to digest. There's a lot of information in that. And then, again, review goals and strategies for each of those focus areas. So I can stop and just see if there's any questions. And if there aren't, I could go into the first review item. Okay? Okay, so hopefully you remember this. It's been a while and hopefully you're familiar with this, but we spent a lot of time developing vision and core values. So here's our vision statement. I'm not going to, I'm not going to read it, but there are four kind of key words that we pulled out and further developed: equity, sustainability, resilience, and vibrancy. So this, these are kind of the core of that vision statement, that everything is built around. And then we developed these core values, which are community character, community connectivity, environmental sustainability, economic vibrancy, community places, and civic leadership. So everything is building off of this base and this intent. So this is, this is the community articulating our vision for the next 20 years and what we want to achieve. So everything's built off of this. So I just wanted to do, touch base and see if council has any questions. You know, this is a time where we, we can look at this. You can make some suggestions if there's some consensus or direction from, you know, the majority of council. We can certainly make amendments to this also if critical.
I want to ask the city clerk if council member Hefner raises his hand. You're going to have to tell us or tell me because I can't, I don't-
He hasn't had his hand raised. I was just waiting for Rob to finish.
Okay. I kind of figure he, he might be. So I, yeah.
Thank you. Is that, is that my cue?
That's your cue.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Sorry, sorry you can't see me and my, my internet here is not so good. I, I think this is largely consistent with what we talked about, but I have just a couple items that I think we discussed, both in the drafting of this material and then I think at the, whatever our most recent meeting on this was. And the first is just looking at the, the definition of equity that's in the draft. We talk about achieving these things to make sure that all residents, regardless of income, age, or background, have the opportunity to live, work, and play in Louisville. And I don't think we mean to limit it to just residents, i.e. people who live here. Obviously, there's people who, who work and play in Louisville and who may live here in the future, who I think we want to encompass in this language and not suggest that by any stretch, we're limiting the, the plan to people who live here already. So that's, that's one point. And then the second one is just on the community character. You know, the definition is what we all drafted and, and my memory is we were all pretty careful in choosing language for that. And the language is we value a balanced approach to change that embraces and enhances our community character, which I, to me captures the sentiment of what we're trying to do. But throughout the draft, there's a lot of language around preserving, preserving small town character, preserving residential neighborhoods, preserving the look and feel of this and that. And, you know, I certainly understand the, the intent of that, but I also think we were careful to sort of steer away from this notion that Louisville is a, is a time capsule, you know, trapped, trapped in amber and the goal here is to keep it the same as it's always been. And obviously, there's lots of stuff in the draft that, that cuts the other way. But I just wanted to flag for everyone that I thought some of that language could probably use a little tweaking to be more in line with what we had discussed in vision and values.
Anything else on that?
That's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay. Others, I guess, on this one, we're really not asking so many questions. We'll get some feedback from the public here in just a minute. But other, other comments? Yes, council member Cooperman.
If you could go back a slide. So regarding the definition of equity, I, I fully agree with- So regarding the definition of equity, I fully agree with council member Hefner. I also feel like the definition, I don't know, it's actually sort of a comment about all four of the definitions. I feel like they start off too specific, and then some of them get more general, but not all of them. And I think it should be reversed. I mean, we should offer a fairly general definition and then we could have examples. So like, prioritizing diverse housing options is one way to achieve equity, but it's, I don't think that should be what we say first, right? I mean, we should say something more general first, which is kind of like what follows at the end of the statement. For the definition of sustainability, I think that's even worse, right? I mean, we start off by talking about promoting compact mixed-use development. Sure, that's one example, but, you know, that wouldn't be anywhere near the top of my list for what I would consider sustainability, although I would certainly include it. And likewise, the preservation of open space is just another example. So in particular, in that definition, I feel like we need a much more general definition, and then it'd be fine to give those examples afterwards. You know, the definition of resilience, I think, is a little bit better. As far as vibrancy, I don't know, I also feel like it suffers some of those same problems, and it doesn't really say that much about a lot of our businesses. I don't know. So I feel like we could do a lot better with those particular definitions. Thanks.
And Mayor, can I, so I think too, you know, we spent a lot of time on this, and we only have an hour and a half, so I do want to be mindful of time and still get comments. I think I would say that, you know, if there's consensus on any of these comments, we probably can't wordsmith it tonight. We don't have enough time. But if, like, all of council agrees that we need to reword, for example, each of these four, you know, unifying items to, you know, expand them or be general, then that's fine. So maybe I could just, is that, is council okay with that, just us changing that? And I know council member Cooperman may have very specific comments on the sustainability definition, and maybe if he wants to email those, we could also work on those.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying. We can certainly figure out whether we've got any consensus on general. I mean, we're taking very specific, or, you know, he's offered one suggestion or a couple of suggestions, and we'll sort of see whether people can agree on that and we can move on, I think. Council member Dickinson?
Yeah, I think I generally agree that maybe a little too specific, like, it does seem like, they're very specific examples. I kind of liked it when I first read it and that it's concrete, right? But I sort of agree that it's a little weird to be concrete in the highest level of the plan. So I kind of liked it when I read it, and then I hear your point that equity is achieved by prioritizing diverse housing options. That's so specific. So, yeah, I'd agree that I think these could be potentially more generalized, and then the specifics come later.
Okay.
Mayor, please.
I was just also going to voice my agreement with council member Cooperman's comments, which I think are well-taken. And I think some, you know, recognizing this is a draft, I think this is a section that needs some rework.
Yeah. I just wanted to mention too, like, those weren't the core values. Those were just descriptions of the words that we heard from the community as well. So really, you know, we really just wanted to pull out those words and describe them. You know, I think that the vision statement and the core values and the words themselves are what we're focusing on. I think that the descriptions we put on those were just for the benefit of the draft more than anything else, if that makes sense.
So what you're really, what you're really looking for is the sex?
Yeah, I think these are the fundamental items.
Generally. Not wordsmithing, just the general tenor.
Maybe then you drop them, because the draft says these concepts are the center of the core values, the four. So we're saying they're the center of the core values, but also we shouldn't really look to them because we look to the core values. I think it has to be one or the other.
If I may, sorry, I'm having trouble here. Again, I think we tried to take these words out of the vision statement that we thought were very impactful and just emphasize them, if that makes sense. So I think if you want us to just get rid of them altogether, we certainly can. We don't want to add confusion to it. I think, like, I don't know that they're going to affect the overall end policies of this document, regardless of how we wordsmith these words.
I don't know. My own feeling about the vision is that it's, generally speaking, very broad, very general. I think those core values, I frankly think those are the ones that we need to make sure we're comfortable with. Am I wrong about that?
So through the mayor?
Yeah.
I was viewing, being new to this discussion, I was viewing those four words that came out of the vision as being the lenses of which we would evaluate these core values. So as we're implementing the core values, are we keeping in mind equitable, resilient, sustainable, and vibrant?
Yeah. My own concern on that, sustainable is, we have talked in the past about what that means, and I'll look back at the vision statement just for a second. I don't want to get too hung up on there though. You know, when we, I think we limited that term, but we've talked about economic sustainability, environmental sustainability, and kind of social sustainability. That's, I think, the social sustainability is kind of captured with inequitable. But I think if we all agree roughly with those, you know, the terms that we decided, I don't know, are we comfortable with? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think I think I get your point, Rob, is that you get this vision statement, and all these boxes really were meant to do is kind of give more depth to each word that, like, for example, equity is this. Like, so you have your vision statement, and these are just a little extra. And I think as I read it, it's like, okay, first one, equity. And this is the big thing. It's like, oh, no, no, sorry. Going back, the vision statement and core values is right there, and you pulled out four important words. You've described them a little bit more. So again, maybe a little bit more generic or like, equity can be achieved instead of is achieved. Like, this is how we do equity. Like, equity can be achieved by prioritizing. It could be that simple. And again, sorry, not trying to wordsmith, but I think I'm getting what you're saying, is that these are not the four vision statements, right? These are sort of more information about some key words in your vision statement. So I guess I kind of, I see that perspective down a little differently.
Council member Hamilton.
I'm actually fine if we just remove the four boxes. It sounds like it's causing more confusion, maybe, even though the intent behind it was good. And, you know, I still think that the core values bubbles are really strong without that center spot with all those words, because I hear some confusion. And I think if those of us who have been deep into this for a while now are having some confusion, the community as a whole likely will as well. So maybe the KISS principle applied here might be of benefit.
I actually liked what the city manager was commenting on. And if you pull it back to the council board plan, and that we've asked ourselves and staff to look at everything through this, through a lens, so that it's important, no matter which one of those core values are touched, they all need to be touched by, like, looking through that, like, center lens. And that maybe is a better language, just even just using that word. Maybe, I think, maybe like councilor Hamilton was saying, eliminate all the detail that describes what they are, but just iterate that that's what that is. That's the lens that all of the core values are looked through. And maybe even just leave it at that, the kind of way that we do everything else that we're doing right now.
Yeah, I would say if council is comfortable with that, I think that's a good direction to go, to keep it, you know, keep it simple principle on this one. Again, I don't think it's going to change the overall tenor or the real meaningful policies within the document.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Council member Hefner has his hand raised again.
Please. Council member Hefner.
Thanks. I'm just going to agree with my word three colleague that I think unless we, unless we really change how this is presented, it's probably better to delete it in favor of the actual core values, which we all talked about at length, and I think picked pretty carefully, rather than introduce the sort of confusion. And, you know, I hear what director Zucaro is saying, that these aren't really going to change the direction of the plan. But I do think it matters that we say something like, you know, we're trying to be inclusive of all residents versus inclusive of people who work here and go to school here and that sort of thing. I mean, that, to me, is a meaningful policy difference, not sort of a, it's not a throwaway. And so if we're not going to change it, I might just as soon get rid of it, because it appears on page four of the report. And, you know, a lot of people might not read that much farther past page four.
There's a thumbs up from council member Dickinson.
Just quickly, no, I certainly understood those boxes in the way that you described them. I was just trying to suggest ways to improve them, I thought. And so, you know, I favor a little bit sort of the perspective that the city manager and council member current offer, but we could also delete them.
Okay. I tend to like the keep it simple and cutting them out, but I think that's pretty close. I don't really want to take a vote on it so much. Maybe if there's any, but...
If, I would just say this isn't your last bite at the apple.
Yeah.
You know, I think we've gotten good input on this, and I think we can take another shot at it with simplifying it, maybe having them as, just stating them as a lens. It's a really nice graphic on the left. Maybe we just keep it as the graphic as a lens.
I like the graphic on the left.
So, yeah.
Any, any public comment on this particular part?
Yeah.
I would just, Heather Smith, Ward three, and a KISS hand. A simple comment here. I would say I read through it. I was really, I was like, there are layers and layers and layers, and it's mysterious. And I'm sure that if you have the time to study it in more depth, the layers make sense, but they honestly didn't. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I have someone on line that would like to give public comment.
Sure. And then John.
Tamara, go ahead when you're ready.
Hi, this is Tamara Krantz. I live in Ward three. And I really wanted to just say quickly that I appreciated council member Cooperman's suggestion that the wording, if you do keep that section in, that the wording on sustainability be changed, because sustainability is so much more broad. And I appreciated what Mayor Lay said, that there's different aspects to sustainability, such as social sustainability and economic sustainability. But I also agree that those are already covered in the equity section and the vibrancy section. So I really feel that the sustainability that's left meant to me environmental sustainability. So if you do keep it in, I hope you could make a more broad definition of sustainability, of environmental sustainability in that part. And then I just also wanted to really quickly comment on the, on the vision statement. I really wish that when you did the public input, I understand that you incorporated 2,000 comments and values that people, ideas that people gave into that vision statement. But I wish that there had been a choice of, like, three vision statements that the public could choose from. And I'm really hoping that moving forward in the next phase, that you're able to give us some choices of things that are actually going to end up, you know, written in the plan, rather than just kind of giving little input that kind of works its way in. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thanks a lot for taking comment on this part.
Thank you, Tamara. John.
John Cowley, Ward three. This will be a little complicated. I feel, is it, we're in danger of losing the forest for the trees. I've read the Ann Arbor, Michigan, they're developing a comprehensive plan. You could swap that in, swap that out, you'd get the same words. All these lovely, high-level goals. I want to quote from a different comprehensive plan. The city should define, the city should define citywide goals for affordable and low-income housing through a public process. That was in our last comprehensive plan. The city should continue to work with Boulder County Housing Authority and others to ensure adequate supply of housing. That was in our last comprehensive plan. So are we going to, when we finally get to that particular thing, are we just going to state it over again? Have we done any of that? I think, I used to work with kids doing science projects, and I would say, design your project thinking about the poster you want to have on the table. What do you want on that poster? What graphs? And then go back and make a plan. I think the city should say, you know, for our legacy, there are five things we'd like to accomplish. Add affordable housing. You can come up with your list. And not lose track of that through this whole process and come out at the end with commitments, what do you call it, implementation plans. If we want affordable housing, we should start building a fund to buy property. We should be working with the Boulder County Housing. So I'm just offering the thought, think of where you want to end up, and don't get lost in all the nice words that Ann Arbor, Michigan has, pages and pages and pages. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. Very good point. Yep.
I didn't know you were going to call our names. It is. This is it?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Hi, everyone.
Just on this part, though.
Yes, of course.
Just on this part.
Just on this part. Okay. So on the possible elimination of the four boxes, because sticking with, sorry, Tiff Boyd, Louisville, Colorado, Ward three. So sticking with the point about if you're going to eliminate those four boxes. So the resilience box, I guess, would have to be absorbed then maybe into the environmental sustainability box. And resilience is becoming one of those generic words that's thrown around a lot. But in what it stated, can you go to the other slide when it talked about resilience? Yeah, that one. So in this slide, it talks a little bit about, you know, a lot of things that we've learned post-Marshall Fire. But also, the resilience piece is also climate mitigation. And elevating the reduction of greenhouse gases in our community needs to be either there or in the sustainability section, because I think you received a lot of letters from students that really wanted the comp plan to reflect the climate action plan that our city has already adopted. And back to John's point, instead of making these words on paper, you know, what does reducing greenhouse gases in our community look like? What, how do we implement that? Because our greenhouse gases just continue to rise. And we have to be very thoughtful about, we all believe in affordable housing, increasing density in our community, but if we don't do that in a thoughtful way, with the codes and policies in place to eliminate and reduce greenhouse gases, they're just going to continue to go up. And then what we're doing is we're making a comp plan that is not aligned with our climate action goals at all. So just wanted to throw that out there, because it does relate to the four squares. Good? Okay. Good? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
Oh.
Few more.
Matt Jones, Louisville. I didn't know you were going to let me torture you several times coming up here. The one comment I'd have is I agree, those four extra boxes, you've put all these extra dimensions on it, it gets confusing. And the core values does the next step, if you will. And environmental sustainability is missing open space preservation, which is in the city charter. That's one of my themes I keep talking about. So that would be good to have in there, to have that piece that is important and I heard from people and public comment on the plan before. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. All right.
I say an overarching thing, I, I hear what you're saying, John, about kind of like vanilla, right? And I think we need to be careful that, you know, it's, it's not what any city has. But again, at the same time, you know, we don't have like family values that just look like individual ownership, freedom and liberty, like these are not our core values, right? So I would say that like, you know, as a liberal, left-leaning city in the United States of America, we have some similar values probably to other cities like that. So I think it's how we implement, how we do this and getting into the details. And, but I think to the point, these big statements matter, but it's not what actually matters, right? It is a sense of who we are, but the, in the details probably don't matter. It's how we implement it, how seriously we implement it. Are we actually making new code about density and things like that? So I, you know, I'm excited to get into the deeper parts of this because I don't think we'll ever get it right at the top, right?
In some, I guess my comment on that would be, I agree with you and I'm, I'm ready to move on myself. And I think kind of reading the room that everybody else is too, because I, you know, the vision is so. We can talk about that as we, as we did back in January, I think, forever. I think, I don't hear anybody saying they disagree with the core values or that we missed one. I heard that, well, the kind of glue or the lenses, maybe, maybe not, but we can, you know, I think in the next iteration, maybe it makes some progress. And I also heard that the four boxes are really not very helpful.
Right, yeah, I think, I think we got that. And I think we got pretty good direction on that element. And then to get, I think everybody's wanting to get to the more substantive elements, so unless there's more substantive comments on that. Again, this is the base, it's meant to be broad and it's, it's to lead to the more substantive items.
Yeah.
If you'd like, I can go on to the next.
Let's do that.
So here's item number two, which is the future land use map and the land use categories. So this is really, you know, th- these are different policies, you know, the, this city council has adopted a housing plan. It's, it's in your, it's in your work plan to focus on housing. This is moving, you know, this is trying to move that significantly forward. We've talked about equity, sustainability, vibrancy, even resiliency, all of those things are, we're trying to reflect that in this land use plan. And I'll kind of go over that. So we have 10 place types. And again, this isn't regulatory, but this would have to lead to regulatory changes. For each of these 10 types, we have the community character, the land uses, sorry about the double uses, transportation connectivity and development considerations. I'm not intending that we don't, we don't have time to go over each of these for each land use type. So I just want to make sure you're aware that it's, there's a lot there, there's a lot of substance to each of these. And I'm gonna ver- I'm gonna simplify them significantly. These are all your land use types. So over on the left, we're talking about, you know, we're starting with low density residential. As you go down, we're getting more intense development, we're getting more mixed use, but it's all really residential, mixed use with commercial mixed in. And then on the right, we have our kind of really traditional commercial corridors and office industrial, of course, parks, open space and, you know, public quasi, quasi-public types of land uses. But what I want to focus on and what I want to make you aware of when I show the map is, you know, what does this look like and feel like? And we, again, I don't know that we have time tonight, but I'm always happy to give examples. We could, we actually have some examples of what this looks like. But of course, we all know what low density residential neighborhood is, but mixed, then you go to mixed use residential neighborhood. So that could be a mix of single-family detached, but you're really moving more into that row home, attached unit type development. Maybe some multifamily residential, but it's a mix. So this is kind of, kind of North End. So if you're familiar with North End, and again, I have a picture of it if anybody wants, but we've got some row homes next to some three-story apartments. And then we go into a little bit, so that's eight to 18 dwelling units per acre, mixed in with some commercial. Then we go to neighborhood center. This is a little bit more intense. This is meant to be multifamily housing, maybe with ground floor retail, or it doesn't have to be ground floor retail, it could be like D-Lo where it's separated. But that's how it's written right now. This is more traditional what we're used to in Louisville, up to three stories. It's what we're used to in our mixed use overlay district, 18 to 30 dwelling units per acre, would be what you'd be seeing there. And then we get into downtown central business district. That's really kind of a mix of downtown and D-Lo, what we're envisioning for our downtown core here. A mix of retail, commercial, office, where you could have upper stories with residential and office, up to three stories, 18 to 30 dwelling units per acre if you're having residential. But maybe some areas with the strong commercial focus. Regional center is something that's, that's new, that we did get a lot of community feedback on in varying degrees. Some are very supportive, there's certainly some concern about it, but there's a few areas that we've picked out for really higher density development. That could be potentially the CU side or maybe a site in Redtail that you'll see on the map. But this is, you know, a mix of higher density multifamily housing, more commercial mixed in would be the ideal. Not all five stories, but probably a mix of, a mix of stories. You know, I can show you some images. Again, if you have questions as we get into this discussion, we've pulled up some images of a mix of one, two, three, four, five story developments that are happening in the Denver metro area. Reuse of Big Box, for example, would be very similar to what we're envisioning here. Commercial corridor, again, would be primarily commercial, but traditionally, we've had some mix of residential in those commercial corridors. So that could still be on the table. Everybody knows, I think, what industrial is, that's the tech center, it's what Redtail's currently planned for. Parks and open space are critical, of course, but don't need a lot of explanation. And then certainly some areas, we've got a lot of comments about heart centers, more gathering places, more parks, more things like that. So that could be captured under that public, quasi-public and institutional. So that's, that's a very high overview, just to kind of zoom through it. I, I just wanted to pull up, these are our maps in our current comprehensive plans, our corridor plans and our comprehensive plan. I just wanted to point that, point to that these really reflect, they don't reflect any land use changes. Even 11, 12 years ago when we adopted these, it was really keep all of our, our land uses. You know, not have any residential or new residential mixed use. There, again, we're trying to contemplate that, our housing plans calling for about, you know, if we keep up with the county, about 2,700 housing units so, and so forth. And then also trying to achieve our goals of being, being more equitable, being more sustainable. We heard comments about how higher density mixed use development reduces vehicle miles traveled, it's less energy intensive. It uses resources better. There's a lot of opportunities for that to be more sustainable as well as being more affordable and equitable. So. Let me see if I can go to the next slide here. What these are? Yeah, so thi- this is the comprehensive plan land use map. It wasn't even called, we didn't even have, this is our current comprehensive plan. So yeah, I sped through that because I'm becoming probably way too time conscious, trying to get through everything. So this is our 2010 comprehensive plan. It was really an urban design map because I think the direction from council at the time was to not change land uses. So they focused more on design and having kind of this, you know, different areas and having, you know, different types of physical development, but no change in land uses from what currently existed at that time. And then we followed up with the South Boulder Road Small Area Plan. This is the land use map. It's all commercial and office. As far as reflecting existing land uses, any of the residential in there was existing. So the policies in that plan were to not allow any additional residential. This is the McCaslin Small Area Plan, same thing. We had some discussions about bringing in some mixed use residential and council direction at that time was keep the existing land use mix that we had at that time. So that's what those maps reflect. So here's the first draft. Again, this was the preliminary draft. We've been working with consultants, we've been working with landowners and others on this. You know, we do have those focus areas and I'm not going to get into that just for time, but you know, basically it's, it's the McCaslin Corridor, it's Redtail Ridge, it's downtown and D-Lo. It's the South Boulder Road Corridor are kind of our four opportunity areas. And when you really understand those land uses that we talked about, I'm going to start with McCaslin. So there, this represents a different vision for the McCaslin Corridor. There's about 70 vacant acres on McCaslin and this vision reflects having kind of a lower density housing transition to the existing residential. But having that transition, you know, there could be some commercial here, it could be all residential, that is the mixed neighborhood. And then there's an area here which is the neighborhood center, that's a little bit more high intensity, but it doesn't exceed three stories. So it'd be very consistent with the office buildings that are there from a physical development. And then, you know, keeping that commercial corridor that exists now and then transitioning to up against US 36, potentially allowing even higher density. So right now it says up, up to five stories. Again, I just want to emphasize that doesn't mean it's all five-story block buildings. Ideally, it's, you know, a mix of architecture. That's typically what, when you look and see what gets built in these redevelopments, it's a mix of architecture. We would write the design standards to require that. So when you're thinking of five stories, think of it as a mix of really one through five stories in those developments. But that encompasses the CU development as well as some development on the other side of McCaslin. There could be some redevelopment opportunity, but the idea is this is up against the highway. There could still be some transition in height so that the higher buildings are up against the highway, for example. So those could be addressed through design standards. So that's a, that's a big difference in that opportunity area. Going down to Redtail Ridge, we're looking at the existing hospital campus up here as well as Redtail Ridge. The new hospital campus would be down in this corner here. The idea is to, whether it's the existing hospital campus that, you know, could redevelop over time or different portions of Redtail Ridge, is bringing in some of that neighborhood center development. Which would be three-story mixed use with residential. And then maybe some regional center, which is that higher density that we talked about, maybe up to five stories. And the reason we put that there is it's, it's across, it's adjacent to Northwest Parkway, it's across the Parkway from this Broomfield Development that has up to five-story development. So there's some context for having that higher development, higher intensity development there. The core would still be kind of those institutional and office, light industrial uses which are currently planned. I also want to note, this land use map is not intended to necessarily be parcel specific. It's just supposed to give an intention of the general mix of uses, but we are looking at, you know, properties. For example, in McCaslin, we did kind of pick out most of the vacant properties because they're more likely to develop in this way. A little, and I wanted to mention here on the McCaslin development, is this is kind of envisioned as a neighborhood. This could be a whole new neighborhood with a whole new identity. We do have like a civic or park space central to that, that we're trying to develop out as far as the, the vision for this as well. As well as you can see all of these connections. We know multimodal connections and trails are really important. Again, these aren't picking the location of those, it's just showing that we have to make these connections in order for this to meet the vision of what we want. Going up to, I'd say downtown and D-Lo, we've kind of expanded some of those potential mixed use higher density areas down to the south, but we're reflecting kind of current land use policies through D-Lo and downtown. And then South Boulder Road, it's really bringing that neighborhood center to a few different areas that would allow more mixed use residential. We do have a category here, this blue stripe, which is naturally occurring affordable housing. So there's policies in there that would ideally preserve those natural occurring affordable housing elements as well. So there's policies around that. So that's again, a very high level overview of those opportunity areas, how these land uses work. Again, trying to implement those lenses of being equitable, resilient, sustainable, vibrant. We do think this will further actual economic development goals, even though it's not pure commercial. The, it, the, what we hear from the development community as well as our consultant EPS that's advising us on this plan, that, you know, doing this type of mixed use development can add to more better economic development. McCaslin has been, as you know, it's been struggling to stay vibrant and actually having mixed use residential can add to that economic development and vibrancy. So that's an important element of adding the residential in with those goals. So I'll end there and see if we have questions, comments.
And on this one, I, here's what I want to avoid. I, I don't want to get into the council discussion right away because I think that, that took us off a little bit the last time. We can get to that, but I'd like to get council questions on the map first, then we'll get some public comment and then we can have the discussion that we need to between us. So.
Yep.
This looks really good. I was curious, if you look along McCaslin, I kind of was zooming in on some of the other areas. I thought that maybe there were some more areas that were naturally occurring affordable or were also like mixed neighborhood. I wanted to see what, how you categorized in this, like the Copper Ridge community that's on McCaslin by century. It's a two-story apartment complex and, you know, like all single stairwells. So it, what's interesting is it blends in so well, it's almost like deceptive. People think it's just housing, which is kind of a really great way of setting the, the floor for that's what's possible. It just looks like single-family homes. So I think, one, it's naturally occurring, but two, it's also mixed. And there's also, and I think it was in here is mixed, but it's behind the rec center where all of the, the townhouses are that got rebuilt from the fire, the wildfire condominiums. And I just was curious to know if those, some of those are just, and then there's also some off a cherry as well. Are they just too tiny to be classified?
Well, so here's my thoughts on it and we, and we could, you know, I, for some reason, this is Copper Ridge. It's, I don't know what color it's intended to be, but that's, you know, it's.
You have the shopping center, then Balfour and then Copper Ridge.
Yeah, I think Copper Ridge and Balfour, I think, might be in this location. And then there's some condos over here that were, you know, we don't have them labeled as, you know, some of these land uses allow a mix of residential. So we don't necessarily have to call them out specifically as residential. But we, we should look at those and make sure those are, again, this, this is a rough draft.
Yeah.
And these are things that, that will, will verify and figure out how to categorize them. You know, some of the, some of the housing up here, I would say, is particularly affordable compared to Copper Ridge and the condos. So I think if we dug, just my hunch, I'd have to verify, but I think if we dug into actually what rents were and the condos are actually ownership over on McCaslin, they may not be that affordable. They're just higher density. So we really tried to focus on things that were maybe, you know, you know, meeting that, you know, capital A affordable, sorry to keep, keep using.
Yeah, I know.
You know, and it's, it's not restricted capital A, but it would be in that category. But yeah, we could look into that.
That, because one of the things we kind of knocked around together as the council talking about too, was some of the older homes in parts of Louisville, kind of on east of Via Appia, south of South Boulder Road, that some of those older homes that are built, they're not really large. That they're like, especially the unrenovated ones, they're, they are part of that naturally occurring. And I, and I don't know how we reflect maybe the sentiment that that would be encouraged to stay that way versus.
I, I would say that, yeah, tho- those are part of kind of those established neighborhoods. I mean, it's up to council if you really want to. I think the question is, is do you want to have specific policies for those, those parts of the community? I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know that we've developed policies. We're assuming those are going to stay for the next 20 years, the vision of, you know, the life of this plan. We call, we called these out because they're maybe in danger of being redeveloped.
Thank you.
So, you know, we don't think these, the one, the other ones you mentioned are in danger of being redeveloped.
Okay. Good, thank you for that, I appreciate it. It was it, thanks.
Councilmember Heffron, do you have a question?
Yeah, thanks. My question is around the yellow areas, the residential areas on the map, and just understanding sort of, how does that, how is that intended to compare to the status quo? Does it represent a change, or does it represent essentially holding things the same?
I think that, you know, our, I think our current idea is that it would generally hold the same. You know, I think we're implementing things like AD, like our ADU ordinance, which would change those neighborhoods to some extent, but we, we are not proposing, for example, taking any of those yellow areas and rezoning them to duplex zoning. We didn't feel like there was community support or input for that broadly, but, you know, that's up for council discussion and direction, if you wanted to designate some areas there.
So then my, my follow-up is on, let's see, it's page 38 of the draft. We say in the, in the yellow zones, we're creating 12,000 to 14,000 new low-density residential units. Where are those coming from?
Right. So I, so that, that table is not accurate. I would recommend you don't refer to that. That's just something that we would have caught, I think, in the staff review before we presented to council, so I don't think there's anything that we can take from that table at this point.
Okay. None of those figures are accurate as to residential units or jobs or anything?
No.
Okay.
Others, questions? Yes, councilmember.
One question about the downtown central business district definition. I was just curious, how does the definition compare to what we, particularly for residential, how does it compare to what we currently have or allow in downtown?
Right, yeah. So downtown, we only allow residential as a special review use. The idea is that we could develop policies that could allow residential by right, if they're on the upper floors. That's one potential outcome of this that would be different.
Okay. And the density in particular, like, I don't know?
Right. So I think we'll have to check that density number in a mixed vertical mixed use. It's not going to be that high.
Right.
Because of the commercial on the ground floor.
Okay, that's helpful. And then I, just curious, so, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but I find the name Neighborhood Center and Regional Center a little bit strange. Like, I don't know, like a regional center, if you just said, like, what's a regional center in Lewisville? I might say the hospital, because it's like somewhere that people come to from the, like, from all over the region, right? And I wouldn't necessarily say that it's that. So I'm just, I was curious about how you chose that name. I mean, the same thing for Neighborhood Center, like, I would have thought that's, you know, a part of a neighborhood, maybe even single-family, where for whatever reason, people congregate.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Well, you know, we're not tied to any of these names. I don't think they, you know, they don't dictate, again, the specifics of it. You know, I would say, let me, I think the idea, just with the regional center, is there, I mean, these are more intense developments, and they're gonna, just by the nature of them, they're gonna kind of be the center of a neighborhood or a development. They'll kind of have a focus around that development. So, I mean, that's part of it. I would say, you know, the Neighborhood Center is, it's, you know, that's maybe, for example, if this becomes a neighborhood, and this is all row homes, and maybe single, you know, row homes, single-family homes, maybe an apartment down here, and here you have the Neighborhood Center. Well, that might be more of a mixed-use walkable-type streetscape. So that's where you go, that's your Neighborhood Center, that's where you go to get coffee.
Right.
So I think that's kind of the genesis of why you would call that pink color a Neighborhood Center, is it's kind of that mixed-use walkable downtown where you go, and from a surrounding neighborhood. So that's the genesis, maybe, of those names, as best as I can describe them. If somebody wants to name them something different, we certainly can. Yep.
Other questions?
I had, I had a question. Some of this is kind of confusing, because it's, it's, there's sort of some, kind of some binaries, that even though these, these uses are sort of clusters of different characteristics, right, that, you know, you're not, you're not limiting, you know, the categories aren't the same as zoning, for example. One of the things that I was thinking about the other day is, it might, at some point, well, I guess, it would be nice to have some examples of the zoning areas to fit, not to, I'm not saying this for a while, that, this is not a zoning map, I get it, but some of, it's going to get kind of, it may get kind of confusing for the residents, and I wonder whether some cheat sheet that talks about some of the kinds of zoning that we have, that might fit into there.
Yeah.
I don't know, is that something that you have in the works?
Yeah, yeah, we can present, we can bring that out with the, you know, when we do our public input in July, for example, we've started to develop that table. I would also say that I think the intent of where we're going is that we're going to rewrite our land development code, and these will all change in description too. So I don't want someone to think that we're just going to take our existing zoning and fit it into these categories necessarily. There might, there's probably a better way to do it, when we get to that point.
Gotcha. Another question I had is, you know, when we've been talking about, like, Redtail Ridge, having residential use down there, of course, hasn't, it came up in a very early iteration of the plan down there. What I'm wondering is, you know, in a place like that, where there's, you know, there's entitlements, there's, you know, what is the point of kind of mapping on to, to this all areas that are, or uses that are sort of totally different than?
What their incurred entitlement is? Yeah, I mean, you know, even if you take McCaslin, we have the, I mean, there's entitlements there. We've had entitlements for several decades, and they haven't come to fruition because of market forces, primarily. I would say, why do we want to do it here? You know, could they build this all out as another, you know, Colorado Tech Center with just offices and industrial uses? Potentially, maybe the market's there for that. But I think our, the other goals we have in the plan for sustainability, trying to get people out of their cars, trying to provide more housing and affordable housing, this is a primary location where you could do that. And I know, you know, in talking with the landowners, you know, they're interested. I think that they think this could be a viable project for them, in lieu of doing the industrial and office park solely. I mean, they still want to do that as the core of the development.
Got it. Yes, councilmember.
Yeah, I think, I think what I like about this is my, I wasn't here for the last comp plan, but one of the things that was sort of said to me was, well, we already know what's going on with ConocoPhillips, so, you know, whatever, that's, we'll just do the comp plan where it just is what they've asked, and it's whatever their GDP is, that's our comp plan, move on. And it wasn't like what the city actually wanted, it was what was planned. And so I think we have some that's planned, and that's likely what'll get built. But if you were to be city planners and decide what you wanted where, we might actually envision something like this. And then again, we'll see if zoning changes, or if the, if the landowners want anything to do with that. So I think it's still, we need to debate whether that's what we all want. But I think that's, that for me would be why to do something that isn't what is currently allowed there, is because I think that was a mistake last time to just kind of be like, well, that's what's allowed, we'll move forward. So that'd be my two cents on that.
Good point. Yes, councilmember.
I agree. That was actually a, like, a really good way of putting it, the way you would want to see the changes on here. I am curious, though, about the pink being to the far north side of that, near all of the open space, versus to the south side of the Redtail Ridge area, where you're going to have much greater access to the transit that's closer to 36.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think, you know, this is a high, high-density area that I think we're, you know, could be more transit-oriented. Hopefully, there might be transit that comes through that area at some point as well. I think we, this, this parcel was picked in particular because it's adjacent to parks and open space, and for residential areas, that could be a really nice amenity for those residential areas.
And the school.
And the school, thank you, yep, as well as the school. So adjacency to parks and school is why that property was picked. The developers interested in this property, and then, but yeah, transit's a tricky thing, because, you know, the Flatiron Flyer is way down here, but until we get Circulator or something else, you know, it may not get used that much.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's actually really walkable from, like, directly across the street at VFR, the south end, which if that residential was closer to that, I only know because I've actually walked it, and everybody in this room knows I can't walk far, so, so it is, it is doable. And so I was looking at that and went, you know, I wasn't sure, and I, and listening to a lot of the community, especially over the last several years, I was concerned about that being a location for such high-density residential.
I would also say, this is the hospital parcel, so that's not going to be residential. And then we are planning a grade-separated crossing at this location, so that's also some good synergy to get people over and then down with getting across Northwest Parkway.
Any other questions before we take public comment? Why don't we take public comment?
Sorry.
A few minutes? Yes, go ahead. Come on. You gotta turn it, turn it on. Turn it on. You don't know.
Thank you. Okay. Catherine Smith, Ward 3. I just wanted to say that I've been focusing on the McCaslin Corridor area and really thinking about it. And I feel like CU set a really high bar tonight, and I'm really pleased. And so I want to ask a different question, which is, how can we leverage what CU is bringing to us? And so some ideas that I had were, you know, do we want to offer incentives, figure out a way to get other developers to build to lead standards? Do we have ways to bring in green businesses? Can we get the existing businesses in that corridor to operate in greener ways? Is there some, some way that we can kind of create a new way of looking at cities in that place? And then I just, I worry from an economic sustainability perspective, that if we convert too much of our commercial to residential, that we're going to have a financial problem. And, you know, I don't know what the right question to ask the city staff is exactly, but, you know, some of the things that I'm thinking about is, can we estimate how much income we're going to lose from the rezoning? And then figure out strategies to replace that income? Maybe we need to know, is there some metric, like, you need this much in business activity to support X number of residents? I don't, I don't really know what the right question is. And finally, from an environmental sustainability standpoint, one of the reasons that I'm really thinking a lot about the McCaslin Corridor is that it's much more sustainable if we redevelop the blighted and the underdeveloped areas, than if we start developing land that hasn't been developed. And so I'm just asking that, as we grapple with what's sustainable, that we look at it a little bit, in the ways I've suggested, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other public comment? You gonna torture us, Matt?
Yes.
Do we have someone online? Okay.
I've been tortured a lot by that. Matt Jones, Lewisville, Ward 3. Three things. Number one, in those categories of things, there's the one category, open space, and it should be read, instead of trails and open spaces, should read environmental preservation or something like that, and visitor experience. When you go into human dimensions and natural resource, when you do into recreation planning, like if you go to CSU and the Warner School of Natural Resources, you don't go to trail school, you go to human dimension school and visitor experience. And the trail is a tool. It's a secondary thing. And we, we talk about it as the thing, and it's, I think we'd be better off if we put it in the frame of providing a good visitor experience. And trail connectivity is part of that, right? That's kind of how the framework works, so it would make sense to do that. On the downtown business, I know that's a bigger area when I looked at the map, but the downtown, the old town, if you will, having 18 to 30 units just made me drop my jaw. That's, that's going to mean people are going to want to tear down buildings, probably. And I think people in this town do not want that. So I think for that particular area, that's way too many. Maybe some of the outlawing areas that are in that area makes, that makes sense, but not downtown. And finally, I think trying to provide all this housing and changing industrial and commercial in general is an issue with financial viability of the city. And it's been, this conversation's been going on, it's ever since I moved here 20-some years ago. I think there's way too much of that, and when it comes to Redtail Ridge, please, don't open that can of worms again. We had enough, right? I don't like the outcome. You guys probably don't like the outcome totally either. But if you go in there and say, we're going to start putting in housing, oh, we're doing it over again, and it's like, oh my God. And also variances from what was allowed in the comp plan is going to have that same reaction, so please, please, don't put our city in that place. We all like to get along and not fight, so let's not do that.
Sounds like that was begging us not to torture people. Just wanted to clarify that. I think we have one more online.
Do you want to, Mayor, do you want to let Cindy go, and then you want to do online? Tomorrow, whenever you're ready.
Tomorrow, it looks like you're muted on your end.
Okay, you got it? There you go. Okay, great, thank you. Pardon my frankness, because I want to be brief to get in three minutes. Regarding the public process, I feel really strongly, especially after seeing this map, that we need alternatives and statistically significant surveys. Please read my email that I sent you on this, this is so important. The land use map, use map is a huge stretch from what, what seems, seems like a huge stretch to me, from what the input is that you received. Never did the public input show that we want five-story buildings along Highway 36, for example. Please present us with alternative maps to choose from, and ask us fair questions. I think many would want to try to make undeveloped properties open space, like Catherine said. So give us a choice, show us a couple maps. And then second, I just wanted to say, this plan seems extremely focused on new housing growth, without enough commitment on sustainability, decarbonization, or affordability. Changes to the upcoming zoning code and our design guidelines are going to directly control or facilitate which commercial properties are rezoned to residential, how affordable they are, and how sustainable they are, and how the density is balanced with public land dedications and open space. But as the draft plan is written, and I really do understand it's a draft, affordability, sustainability, open space, preservation of biodiversity, decarbonization are all aspirational. We understand that every development is reviewed for compliance with the comp plan. We have an opportunity here to make clear policies in the comp plan for sustainability, et cetera, and we can refer back to these policies in our zoning code. But if the comp plan doesn't direct us to inject these priorities... direct us to inject these priorities into the design code or the land use code, it's going to be business as usual. Sustainability measures, for example, will just have to come up as work plan priorities and wait for a budget allocation. So it seems to me like it's written now, it feels like you could remove all the pages, like probably 50 pages with the goals and the strategies, simply by referring to the post-plan, the sustainability action plan, transportation plan, decarbonization plan, without changing the outcome at all. So I just, I can't wait to see the implementation rate, matrix, but I'm just asking, please write the plan so that in 20 years, we'll have a carbon-neutral Louisville that preserves our biodiversity and has 12% permanently affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, tomorrow.
Oh, hi, Cindy Pedal, Ward two. I didn't plan to speak so much tonight, but I can't help myself. So I wanted to just mention the downtown residential. I've been hearing a lot about changing that from SRU, Special Review Use, to Use by Right. And I just have to say, I think that's a big mistake. It should still be Used by Right, so we can review every individual project and see if that fits in with the character of downtown. You know, a lot of people come to downtown Louisville because it's cute, it's charming, it's pedestrian scale, it's a place you want to hang out. So I don't think we should change that. We have, should be careful how we, how we deal with that. The same thing with going to three stories. It should be on a case-by-case basis. I think that's what it says right now in the design guidelines. I also just wanted to mention, in case you haven't done this math, that we talk about diversity of housing, but, you know, we've already increased 10% or 11% attached housing units since the last comp plan. I don't have that right in front of me, but I did look at that in the past. So we've already had a lot of increase in diversity of housing since the last comp plan, and you can check my math on that. So just what I've noticed, and we've had, you know, things like DLO, Steel Ranch, North Main, North End, so there's been a lot of attached housing units. And then, a lot of the smaller, more affordable, older units have been scraped off and replaced by very large, expensive, say, townhouses. I think, like, East Street would be an example of that. So I really like the idea of trying to preserve some of our older, more affordable housing units. And I've been saying this for 10 or 15 years, let's not confuse high-density with affordable. It's not always the same. And I still want to say, although, we, I think we're being considered like Luddites when we use the word small-town character, but I think there's still place for small-town character in the vision of this comp plan. I think there's a reason most people chose to live in Louisville, because they like that quieter, more peaceful, small-town pedestrian scale. And sure, there may be room to add some affordable housing that may be a little bit more high-density, but let's not assume these people are not going to drive. People are going to drive. People are not going to take the bus to take their child to daycare, to drop their child off for a playdate, to go to the doctor. They're probably not going to take a bus. And they're definitely not going to take a bus unless it's a direct point-to-point. If it involves a transfer, that's really hard. So I think we need to be realistic about, oh, people aren't going to drive in these units. And also, I don't see how 200 housing units would produce more traffic than 600 housing units. So I understand the whole philosophy about high-density is going to be more sustainable, but let's say 200 housing units times two vehicles is 400 vehicles, 600 housing units times two vehicles is 1,200 vehicles. So that just makes no sense to me. So, anyway, I'm out of time. So, thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Okay, let's go back to council. Thoughts about the use classifications and their appearance on the map?
I have some.
Okay, go ahead.
I think in line, Mayor, with your, your first comment earlier, the, the thing I'm feeling is missing here maybe is a little bit more context in terms of sort of, where, where are we now, and where does this represent change? I mean, I think that's more obvious to all of us who've spent a lot of time thinking about this, but probably less obvious to members of the public who, who maybe look at all the colors on the map and have a hard time reading it. I know I certainly had to spend a lot of time sort of comparing it to the existing map. So a little more context on what the change is. And then, the, more important than that, the thing I'd really like to see is what Rob shared with us tonight, which is some of the why behind the new designations. Like, why is the, the land use map for Redtail Ridge what it is? Why is the McCaslin area what it is? And just a little bit more narrative around that. I think the descriptions in the draft plan are really good as to what the land use types are, but why we're sort of coloring them on the map where they appear would be really helpful to me, and I would imagine helpful to members of the public and future users of the plan once we're all long gone and they're trying to figure out why we did what we did.
Thanks.
And that's really my only comment. I don't have a lot of substantive issue with what's in there, other than I think I would, personally, I would broaden what's allowed within that, that yellow residential category, and maybe start to think about some of the stuff that I think is in the narrative in other parts of the plan around gentle infill and, you know, more diverse mix of housing types and so on, which I think appears a lot throughout the narrative, but maybe doesn't appear so much in the land use type. And that's all I've got.
Thanks. Councilmember, Mayor Dickinson?
Yeah, I agree with kind of what Deidre was saying. You know, I think there's, and not that this isn't coming or whatever, but yeah, this sort of like, my brain goes like, old, new, old, new, old, new, and like, want to compare the two and like, see where the colors are changing, if you will. And like, because one example is the, the red McCaslin Corridor, there's that sort of, that's like light brown mixed neighborhood to the east. And I was like, oh, so that's a, oh, wait, is that a change? That, that's my brain, but, oh, wait, I think that's just what that is now. I don't think that's a cha- so I'm going through that going like, oh, I, I'm not sure. Or maybe part of it's what it was, and part of the south end is maybe a new thing. So I think there's definitely, what we all need, right, is the sense of, oh, what's changing? And really easy, the light brown on the upper left, we know that is currently all commercial. So that whole McCaslin area, that pink area, the orange being C, like, totally, that's so obvious to me because of how familiar. And then there are parts where you're like, ooh, I can't tell what's changed. So that whole northern part, too, you know, downtown, up the, it's like, really trying to understand those, yeah, those, those changes. And then, you know, I think there's something from, from my brain around like, sort of similar colors for residential. So going yellow to brown to pink to orange, right, for me, it feels like light green, well, green we're using for open space, right, but light blue to darker blue to darker blue to even darker blue, that helps me understand. The blue's all kind of residential, and then is, and then is, so I, I, from, again, just a presentation standpoint, I'm having trouble tracking, and I, and maybe the problem there is, well, but that's not, like, that color of blue is also commercial, so it doesn't really work. So I apologize if that's maybe too far, but that's, that's one of the things I was thinking was just sort of like, as I was looking at it, it didn't flow in my brain very well. But maybe there's, again, kind of two maps. Like, if you care about residential, check this out. And here is your color scheme of density of residential. So when you look at, and all I want to know is, tell me where residential's allowed, and at what density I can see that map. And tell me where it's commercial's allowed, and, you know, maybe there's a gradient for that. And so that you can kind of see them in, in each. When you try to put them all on the map all at the same time, you get this. And so maybe that's what this has to be, is like, when they're all there at the same time, it's got to look like this.
Yeah. And we do have an existing land use map in the full draft. So there, there's a map, and, but I understand we need to do more comparison.
Okay.
But there is a map that has all of our existing land uses in, in, in the plan. But, yeah, I think it's a good idea to really try to figure out how to have this map specifically, you know, people be able to see this and see where it's changing. I'm not quite sure how to do it yet, but we'll, we'll put our-
Yeah, I mean, we just, side by side, right now, the whole time, we're looking at two maps of the same city, side by side.
Yeah.
I'd be able to, you know.
We could put them together, yeah.
Anyway, so, sorry, that, I, I, I think just, you know, as we're trying to put something together, rough draft, it's palatable for everyone, and we're, it's easier to talk about stuff like, I now really get that, those diagonal lines being naturally affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing. Great, now those just jump at me now, right? They're different colors, but they jump. So I think this is great work. I, I, I do think this generally does reflect the things that I've been hearing over the last six months. I mean, I think specifically, like, the five-story near 36, the three-stories as you get further away, the attached as you get further away into the single-family home, as you get further away from 36. I see that here reflected in this mapping. So I think, I think a lot of this sort of makes sense to me everywhere. So I, similar to Deidre, I don't really have any, there's nothing that jumps out as like, no, this is wrong, this isn't what people have been asking for, hate this. I think generally, this, this does seem to match what I've been hearing.
Okay, others?
I, I, I will kind of hearken back to the Redtail Ridge thing and putting in that much residential, especially to the north, when through lots of this process, and I walked a lot of Ward two a couple of years ago, and I didn't hear a lot of sentiment for a lot of housing on the north side, but closer to 36, sure. For, and since this isn't zoned, it's like, it's like, as Mayor Portem was talking about, it's like talking about the potential and where the city's seeing it. That's my only little hiccup with, like, such a huge space, and we're saying, this is something for developers to be looking at or planning for, is that it's all right there. And I just don't recall hearing that being the general community sentiment, but I just, I mean, that's for everyone to decide.
Just to ask some permission for the, the sort of back and forth here is that, what I heard is, when residential was originally thought of in Redtail, it's like, oh, it's going to be an island, you're totally making this separate community, it's so separated. I think putting the residential to the south kind of does that, but tucking it up closer to the high school and middle school and elementary school is actually what, what puts it into our city. It's like, why do we build a high school where there are no houses? Oh, there are a bunch of houses near the high school, great. And I, I keep saying high school. It's a literal K through 12, right? So it's, it, right now, some people complain it feels like Superior's High School disconnected from Louisville. And so I think it is actually missing residential type to it. So I think that would be the counter. And again, I think to your point, all, zero residential there. Residential to the south, residential to the north. I think those are all reasonable approaches to take, but that was just the counter that I heard the exact opposite of that, is if you're going to put residential there, you better put it as northwest as possible, so that it's connected to the city, to the current residential.
Quick question. Is that still close enough to the public transit for the qualifying as, like, under, is it Prop 123?
There, I don't know that there's anything in Redtail Ridge that would qualify for Prop 123. It's really, I think it's too far away from any transit stop, is my guess.
Oh, okay.
And then, just, just a note, like, back in 2005, there was residential in, I think, called for in the comp plan in 2005, in the northwest corner, for all the reasons that Councilmember Dickinson, I think, had mentioned. And then in 2010, it was, hey, ConocoPhillips, it just reflected what they had planned.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I'll be brief, because in general, I'm in agreement with the comments that my council members in particular, Deidre, made earlier. The, the one ask I don't think we've mentioned tonight is, I believe there's some overlap in some areas between the OSAB priority acquisition lands and what's being proposed for housing or other developments.
Yep.
I know the map is already busy, but I feel like it would be helpful to have some sort of overlay to see what those interests are that are competing.
And would it make sense to maybe just reflect that map in the plan separately, rather than an overlay, just because of the busyness of the map?
I mean, I'll, I'll ultimately leave it to you all to decide the execution of it, but what made me think about an overlay is just, you know, you actually have some overlay hashing for the naturally affordable housing, the golf course, so even just something like that, I think it'd be helpful to have it on one map if possible.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna maybe ask, or make an observation, and this is more the presentation of it, because I, I think there are real, well, we've, we've had several of these kind of comments of like, not being quite follow it all because of the colors and size. One of the things I was going to suggest is that, not to create more work, but to, to create slices of this for different parts of the city. Because I think we've talked about, God forbid, we should do another McCaslin Small Area Plan. But the idea of perhaps taking that out and being able to blow that up a little bit, and, and to do what Councilmember Hamilton was talking about, I thi- I think is helpful. I don't know how to do it either. I know the tools exist out there for doing something like that. But I, I think that could be really helpful for Redtail. I think it could be helpful for McCaslin. I think it could be helpful for, you know, the big, the, the big opportunity areas.
Sure, yeah, we, you know, maybe by opportunity area. And just, you know, as, as we develop this, we had a lot of discussions with the consultant about parcel-specific, how blurry do we make the lines? Because we don't want it to be come off as a parcel-specific. And so I just want, you know, the more we zoom in, the more it becomes parcel-specific. And, you know, we're trying to reflect a general mix of uses, rather than like, over-relying on parcel-specific. So, but I understand the desire for that, so we might just see what we can do if it's important to council.
Worst, worst comes to worst, you just use the same kind of thing, you're just blowing it up a little bit.
Yeah, we could do that, yeah.
And you could make little notes on the side that say, do not, you know, any, any comparison to real-life figures is purely fiction.
Could I just, could I just add to that comment, Mayor?
Sure.
I just, I, I completely agree, and I think the goal is not to make it more detailed, it's to make it more readable.
Yeah.
And if there's a way to do some blowups to a scale where you can put a label of what the land use is on top of the shaded area, so that you're, right now, you have to do this exercise of looking at the map, then looking at the legend, then flipping 20 pages in the report to the existing land use map, and then coming back. And it's like, it's quite a cumbersome exercise. And if we could do some blowups, not more detail, not more specificity, but just more, more readable, better for the, the user, would, would be, to me, a tremendous improvement to, to make it a sort of working document. Sorry, Mayor, I, I hate to interrupt, but I just thought it was important to say.
That's all right. No, it's okay. You're entitled to interrupt, sometimes, right? What, the other question I had is, yeah, there's residential neighborhood, and we've been talking about, well, we, we don't want to have certain kinds of uses of, I mean, the, you know, the bottom line is there are, there are legal requirements that are going to make some of these things happen, whether we like them or not, or at least if there's the will, you know, if there's a will to put duplexes or triplexes in. It's not like this, we should be somehow in a comp plan saying that that's not something we're going to do, right?
I, I think, referring to the state laws for the transit-oriented communities, is it, yeah. So we're still working through that. We've actually made a, I'd say, a conscious decision to not reflect full implementation of that, because there's, we just don't know how that's going to play out for our community. But that, but if, if city council wants to comply with it, you know, we'll come with a plan that I think will be separate from this comprehensive plan, because the, the timing didn't align with what we need to do to understand our obligations.
Yeah, I mean, we can always modify the comp plan when that becomes clear. I mean, we're doing this at a point in time. I, I suppose maybe making some note of that in the, in the document would be helpful, just so that that's not a big surprise in the event it happens. Other comments? Councilmember Cooperman?
Yeah, one short comment about Redtail Ridge. You know, if we do consider residential there, I think my primary concern would be, you know- there, I think my primary concern would be, you know, creating sort of compact, walkable neighborhoods. Um, and I feel like you kind of get pulled in two directions, right? On the one hand, it does make sense to be near the schools. On the other hand, it makes sense to be near Broomfield. Um, and it doesn't make any sense to be near the highway, I feel like. Um, the other question or comment, um, so the parcel, um, on the northeast corner of 96th and Dillon, that's marked as neighborhood center. Um, I don't know if you wanna say anything about that. Like, I, I feel like that's not a very good place for housing, just because there's nothing there for, to provide any services to people. Um-
Yeah, so let, let me, yeah, I'll, I'll make some comments on that and see what you want. Maybe that's some direction we could take on that. Um, I, I would say, just back to your first comment on Redtail, I would say these two land use categories reflect compact, walkable neighborhoods, to the greatest extent of all the land uses that we're proposing. So, um, if that's what you want there, that's what we have there.
Yeah, I just, like, you're creating, like, distinct, like, areas, so like, you know, like, the lower one along 36, you know, can you really support, you know, a walkable neighborhood?
No, I, I agree. I, I think that's, I would, yeah, I guess I was thinking more of these two. This one is disconnected from that, and I think that would be a different land use type, potentially. And maybe that's something we'd wanna consider, um, is maybe this isn't, um, that compact, walkable neighborhood, maybe it's just, you know, higher-density residential, or townhomes, or something. But, yeah, we'll, we'll have to contemplate that and get your direction. Um, this one, so we did contemplate what to do here, and we talked a lot about how res, you know, residential is probably unlikely here for various reasons, um, especially along this corridor, because it's already kind of platted for commercial. But this, 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 this land use category allows a mix of uses.
Yeah.
So, you know, we certainly could, um, as an alternative, call out a commercial strip here. Um, you know, the St. Louis Parish property to the south is bigger. Um, maybe it's not ideal for a mixed-use, compact neighborhood, but we didn't wanna preclude maybe like, a senior living facility there, or something like that. So, that's the reason, again, if, if there's a desire to limit it to just commercial or industrial, we could do that.
You know, one observation that I would have about where we put residential, or, you know, if we're gonna include that in the Redtail piece, which I have some reservations about, but I'm trying to get over them based on what my colleagues have, have talked about tonight, um, as being the bigger picture of 20 years and 10 years of implementation, um, is that I think where you put housing there is going to tell you quite a bit about whether it's gonna be affordable or not. I, the, I look at this map and I say, I would have a hard time believing that, that it's gonna be as affordable there as if it were in the lower, you know, closer to, to 96th. And may, maybe the, you know, I, and I don't know if that's anything to be stuck on, I just think that that makes, you know, it's gonna make a difference.
Yeah, and I, you know, when we look at our housing plan, um, you know, we have three goals, and one of them is just to increase housing stock in general. Um, and there's all kinds of definitions and ranges of affordability. So, yeah, I, I would say that if we're planning to expand residential, um, not all of it's gonna be affordable. Um, we probably, you know, we may wanna have some that's a broad range of, you know, I know all these are loaded terms, but, you know, workforce housing, or something like that.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I, I feel the need to comment on this Redtail Ridge housing conversation. Affordable housing is obviously a goal of council, it's on our work plan, it's very important. Um, to Councilmember Dickinson's comment earlier, having housing next to the K through 12 makes a lot of sense, especially when we're seeing declining enrollment, um, in our BVSD system. So, I think, you know, I personally, like, I think what we have here right now seems reasonable. It's not gonna check the box for every single goal that we wanna achieve, but I do think it addresses a, a decline and deficiency that we're seeing in the community that I think is important to think about as well, when we look at the positioning of housing in these areas.
Rob, I don't know if you can, to the, zoom in to the downtown area, there's just two things that confuse me. Um, if you're able, are you able to zoom in?
Whoa, that did not, yeah, I'd, um, I can do that, if you wanna give me a-
There's, uh, like, a cross underpass that confuses me. It's like a two-way underpass. Um, it, it both, it goes north, south, and east-west. Um, so I didn't know if that's accidental, or if there's something I'm not understanding.
It's a, it's a new type of underpass that we have, not, I mean, this could be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna chalk that, I, I don't know, I'm gonna say that's maybe part of the draft, draftiness of it.
That's fine. And then, and then, yeah, there's another underpass, like, at what looks like Pine Street, um, that just kind of confuses me. I don't know if, if that's something that we, if that's supposed to be the bike one that goes underneath, but like, that one also confused me, and I just wanna make sure, like, we're not contemplating an underpass at Pine Street, you know, so, under the railroad track. So, and maybe that's supposed to be the South Street underpass, and it's just too far to the south. So, those, those two blue arrows just seem weird to me, uh, but I love the train station red X there. Um, that is optimistic, I love it.
Councilmember Kern?
Thank you. Speaking of underpasses, so, had it been, maybe I'm just not remembering this correctly, but hadn't we kind of talked about maybe the potential for future underpass at McCaslin and Dillon? And, like, where the new CU Boulder is gonna be? So, you could get from one side to the other.
I think they had talked about that.
Um, so, you know, we talked a lot about that with the Transportation Master Plan, about whether to put in, you know, we certainly could put that on the map here, it's not in our TMP. I think the, the conclusion of the TMP was to focus on surface crossing improvements in that location. Um, you know, certainly, if, if council wanted to add an underpass in that location, it could make sense to explore. Again, that's a, that's a long-term exploration. You're talking east-west across McCaslin, which is a big barrier.
Yeah, yeah. Because I was noticing, like, you do have them at three different points along South Boulder Road, and with a lot of the new development, which is kind of what this is focusing on, right, is in the next 20, 10 to 20 years, we're already hearing the plans for very big, dense, new development down by 36, and potentially some more dense really nearby. So, having the connector to, across the street, to all the other services in a safe, meaningful way for pedestrians and cyclists, it, I'm just thinking, I, I remember this conversation, and we talked about-
I'm not assuming there's a major, uh, cutting off like that.
Yeah, just completely segmenting them. And I mean, to Cindy's point, people are going to have cars. I mean, if you, if you go to any apartment complex, anywhere in this region, there is a minimum of one, and mostly two cars at every single unit. And so, I, I think to say that we're gonna put this in and there won't be traffic is, like, definitely not thinking in the real world. It may be more electric cars.
And, and I, I would just say, like, nobody's suggesting that you put in high-density or transit-oriented development, and there won't be cars, and there won't be traffic. But I do absolutely believe there will be, per capita, less vehicle miles traveled, and less, less traffic in general, per unit and per capita, because that's, that, that, there's, there's research on that, and that is what you end up seeing. And I think the CU site specifically, because of the access to the station and the trail-
To transit.
Would be so.
I agree. Right. I just didn't know if we wanted to talk about it and have it in here, so that there might be something, and encourage other developers on both sides of McCaslin to understand that we are considering potential safe and, and easier access.
Yeah, I think that's a great addition if council, you know, it makes a lot of sense.
I'm gonna do a time check, because we really, I, we've got one more piece of it, and I'm not sure, uh, I wanna get your comment, Debbie, so, hold on to it for just a second. Um, but we're pushing almost 10:30 here. Um, what's your, what's everybody's tolerance for? I don't know how long the last, the last part is strat-
The last part has a lot of words in it. Um, you know, I, I think that, I, I think this is kind of critical to our timeline, too. So, I think there's a couple options, is we would really need to complete the public, like, we, if we're gonna keep on that timeline that I showed you, we need to give our consultants direction this week to complete the public review draft. It doesn't mean we're not gonna come back to council whenever you're ready, or in July, when we had it scheduled, and you can dig into those, and we can make further revisions to those. Um, there will be revisions, just based on staff comments, that you are not seeing. And so, the July one hopefully will be more refined and closer to, you know, where, where you want it to be.
That suggests that we keep going.
Uh, either you keep going, or you defer to review that section in July, which would be concurrent with the public review draft. But, do you want me to just give you an overview? In the next 10 minutes, and see where you wanna be?
Yeah, let's, how do people feel about that? Before we do that, I wanna get Deb's comment.
Oh, my comment was just that we were kind of getting down in the weeds on these topics, and that the reason that we were told there was not going to be an underpass under McCaslin is because the city didn't own the property on either side enough to put an underpass in there.
You wanna give a shot?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll at least introduce it and see where you wanna go with it.
Let me, before, can we put it, like, a pin in this? Do you have enough info to direct?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
All right.
Um, okay, so, goals and strategies, again, we, we have all these plan elements, um, and then each of these categories has go, um, goals and strategies. So, oh, sorry, I was gonna go to this. So, what, what you had, so you have all of the goals and strategies in the document that was included in the staff memo. Oh, you're not gonna be able to see this, are you? Um, let me get rid of this. That is not how you do that. Sorry, let me figure this out real quick. Okay.
Oh, there it is.
Can you read that? Is it big enough yet? I know this is painful, this late, I'm-
It's loud.
So, um, so each of those five categories, again, there's three. So, the document that you have, you know, the first one, the focus area is land use and development, and then you've got neighborhood enhancement, then you've got a series of goals below that, then you've got housing diversification, a series of goals below that, development opportunities. So, what I was planning to do is, there's another document with all the strategies, that's really in the weeds, but really just check with you on these 15 areas, and see, like, is, is this directionally, and, you know, I, I think we've got some good comments about the appropriate language that we need to have in here, um, you know, softening some of the language, so we're not, so we're exploring things in the future, like, not everything we're expecting we're gonna do, we don't have the resources probably to do everything that's currently in the plan. So, we'll make those revisions for July. But generally, I just wanted to go one by one, if we had time, but I don't think we're gonna have time, through each of the five categories, and then the three subcategories, and just see if you all had comments, questions, um, you know, what's missing, what do you wanna change?
That, that seems reasonable to me. I, I don't wanna get down in the strategies, because those are, those are the, kind of optional, as I'm understanding it, that those are gonna be, you know, these are examples of things that could be done to achieve the goal. But if you, if we could stay at the goal level-
Yeah, let's, so, yeah, so we have the goals here, so I have, so the first one's land use and development. I don't know if you feel like, I mean, really, to go through this, it would take at least a half hour. I don't know if we have the time to do it tonight, or what you would like to do.
Uh, well, um, maybe a thumbs up, or a thumbs down, or a thumb sideways. And I, God only knows what staff might say about this, if, um, you know, I wanna make sure we're making good choices, but, go ahead.
My, my comment is, I don't, I don't think, I think in the end, we're gonna have Rob read us all of this, and then we're not gonna have time to have substantive conversation about it. And so, then what have we really done, except read it? And so, I think we either need to commit to being here for another 90 minutes to read it and talk about it and get through it, or we're just gonna read it, and we all, hopefully, a lot of us did it already, and we'll do it again, like, so, the alternative is a, another meeting or something else, but I, I don't think, I don't have 90 more minutes to focus on this in a, in a thoughtful way, and I don't know that 30 minutes will do us any good. So, that's why I'm giving a thumbs down.
I, I think that's a really, really solid point. Um, I, let me tell you, my, my concern is, I, I do wanna keep on the schedule as much as we can. I, I think, and, but I don't think, I, I agree with you that we're not gonna get it done tonight. It's not gonna be, either we're gonna rocket through this so fast that we're not gonna have a discussion, or, as you say, we're gonna end up being here till midnight, and then we're gonna be making bad decisions, frankly. Um, I don't know whether we have an opportunity to, you know, for you to provide the input that you need, and then for us to provide input that's on these goals, um, sometime before, with enough time to fix the, or to have the community draft, to do this in essentially stages.
So, so, so maybe one question is, if you've all read, if you've all, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, excuse me, Mayor. So, one opportunity here, because Rob's really looking for council's input on this, is that if, over the next three days, you could individually review this and provide your individual feedback, that we could then provide to Jeff and Rob, so they could get your initial crack at this, to develop this. And then, when we do the, um, public, public draft that's released in July, at least we have your initial comments, and then we would still have the opportunity for the public to comment on the goals and strategies. Um, but that gives you at least a couple more days to go through it, be thoughtful about it, and provide your initial feedback of, yes, we think that this covers what we would like it to, or no. And then, um, that way, the draft that gets issued to the public has your initial thoughts.
Yeah. I, I think that's a nice third way. Um, how do people feel about that suggestion? How about Councilmember Heffner, if you're still there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still with you. Um, that makes sense to me. I mean, I guess, I, I read these as sort of placeholders, um, to be developed. Are these, are these really meant to be what's gonna be carried over, or are they like, the rest of it, that's just sort of provisional?
Well, I think this is, this is to turn into the public review draft in the next few weeks. So, um, you know, this or something very, again, there are staff comments on these, they'll be refined, and then if there's council comments, we'll do, you know, we'll try to incorporate those. We just need to be thoughtful about competing comments, too. So, if we get any of those, we might defer those, or try to have further conversations. Um, but, yeah, this is intended to be the public draft.
Okay. But just, just this section, because there's other sections, right, where we've said, well, this is just, this is, disregard this, because it hasn't really been worked on yet. So, this section i, is meant to be sort of near final?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Cooperman?
Um, I'm just wondering, would it make sense to take a few minutes, and I'm interested in the, in sort of stepping back a moment and understanding a little bit more the development of the five focus areas, um, and then the, the, the three, um, sub-focus area, or the-
Right, so, the, you know, hearing all the public input and trying to mix that with the core values, this is what we came up with, with the consultants, to reflect all of the categories that we wanted to address in the comp plan, if that makes sense. It's just, I mean, if there's something missing, we can take that input and try to reconfigure it, but-
Yeah, I, I think what's helpful is to go back to the December presentation as to the, the feedback that was received from the public, because that, I think, did a good job of trying to capture themes, and it's through those themes that they developed these, um, goals and strategies, is my understanding. and strategies, is my understanding. The other thing I would offer, too, is, you know, for people that would like to have more in-depth discussion over the next couple of days, just let me know, and I know Jeff's gone the end of this week, but we can try to, you know, carve out some time to be able to, you know, answer specific questions if you need more, more in-depth before Friday, or just understand that we'll do the best we can to incorporate what we can, but there's more opportunities for council input and feedback.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'd like to kind of bring this to a close, if we can. Thank you to staff for the really heavy lift on all of this, and I know everybody, I saw, and I'm going to out-here Sam, because she had all of this incredible color on her, on her board, and so some of this is her great work, but I know that everybody had a lot of input, and I appreciate your time and attention, because this is a long meeting. Really important stuff, though, and do what you can the next few days, and we'll keep the train running.
If I could just make one final comment, you know, this is such an important document for the community, and if also, if you could think about, over the next couple of days, the timeframe that we've laid out, if you are uncomfortable with that timeframe, or you're feeling too rushed, let us know now, so that we can make adjustments as to what we're putting out publicly in terms of what the potential timeframe of this adoption could be. We don't want people to feel like, you know, you're making decisions because you have, you know, a few days to do it, while we also don't want to extend the schedule, but this is too important to try to push through, but also recognizing there's been a tremendous amount of public input on this, and really, so it's coming to council now for these policy decisions, and, you know, the public input should really be to kind of steer those policy decisions, but not re-go back and revisit all the public input that's already taken place.
Great point, and what I'd also say is, I think people probably know this, but, you know, we're trying to get this finished before the election, because we've got a full council that's been working pretty hard on all of this stuff, and we've gotten the public input, and, you know, there is an advantage to trying to get it done before that time and getting it adopted, I think, but not at the risk of people feeling like they're getting, they're getting short shrift, and we want to make this a good document, it's going to, going to last. I have seen a comp plan process that went on and on and on the last time, and I don't think we want to do that, so if anyone wants to talk a little bit about that at some point, I'm glad to do that, but I'm not glad to do that except over a cocktail. Anyway, thank you. I was authorized by the city attorney to say she has no report tonight. Is there any identification of future agenda items tonight? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?